Good evening. We'll bring the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We have a very full agenda. My intent is to move the meeting along so that we have sufficient time to focus on paid parking, which we'll need to work through all of the options that in the contours document. So let's get started with public hearings. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much.
Ms. Martin.
Let's get a reward prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to gather. We thank you for watching over us. Please provide wisdom, knowledge, guidance. Be with each and every one of us. We're all on a journey here. Be with us and help guide us. Give us your inspiration. Give us your word. Give us your healing. Watch over us and be with us as we go home this evening and the rest of this week. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I said I was going to move this meeting along. So, public hearings. Public hearing one. Citizen comments on a proposed text amendment for the UDO.
Good evening. Slides will pop up here. We'll get started. This first public hearing, as you just mentioned, is for a proposed text amendment for section 8.14 of the Unified Development Ordinance. That section is titled Notes to the Zoning District Development Standards. So some background on this particular text amendment. In reviewing the current zoning standards, staff identified a conflict in that section regarding mechanical equipment, the supporting structures for that equipment, and the side yard setbacks. We'll go over what those conflicts are. But to provide clarity to town staff, citizens, and the builders, the staff drafted a proposed amendment to standardize the language and to provide allowances to meet the requirements of the North Carolina Building Code. The planning board reviewed this at their August meeting and recommended town council adopt the proposed ordinance. So our current ordinance, there's two sections that are in conflict here. The first is 8.14.7. This has a carve-out for certain parts of a house where they can encroach into the side yard setback. The typical side yard setback in our residential districts is eight feet. This section includes a carve-out for mechanical equipment where it can encroach into that eight-foot setback, as long as it's not more than five feet from any or not less than five feet from any lot line. The very next section, 8.14.8, includes in the last sentence a carve-out for open or enclosed fire escapes, outside stairways, balconies, and other necessary unenclosed projections where they may extend no more than three and a half feet into a required setback. And what staff and what property owners and builders were dealing with is that applies to a platform where you might have to raise your HVAC. If you're in a flood hazard area, you have to elevate that mechanical equipment. So that platform is allowed to encroach three and a half feet into the setback, and the mechanical equipment itself is only allowed to encroach three feet into that side setback. So it's a little bit of an administrative problem because we have to ask people to provide a survey that not only locates that platform, but also locates where exactly that mechanical equipment is. And then if you're a property owner who's maybe purchased a piece of property and you need to replace your HVAC equipment because the, you know, it's just gone out, you might think, well, I can place it anywhere on this platform. Well, you would be wrong. It would have to be six inches off the edge of that platform. And a further issue we ran into is there's building code requirements for separation from that mechanical equipment to the actual building itself. It's typically about one foot. Most units are actually getting bigger in size now, and they're about three feet. So once you factor all that in together, not only is there a conflict between these two standards, it's difficult to even meet the North Carolina Building Code if you're going to place this equipment into the side yard. So the proposed amendment would create an allowance for four feet, once again taking into account the typical size of the equipment and the requirement for a separation from the North Carolina Building Code. It would be the same for the platform and for the actual equipment itself, so you wouldn't have a staff who, which we've actually run into where people are trying to replace their equipment and either can't or have to, you know, go and get an additional survey just to replace the HVAC equipment. We'd also change the language from other unnecessary enclosed projections that exist right now to unenclosed support structures. A necessary projection is kind of a, you know, what is that versus a support structure actually has a purpose. So we wanted to provide a little bit of additional clarity on what qualifies for that allowance. When we looked at our adopted land use plans, there's quite a bit of information about what the town should consider when drafting and updating the UDO, which is where these standards live. It recommends a simpler, more flexible, and easy-to-administer regulatory document, clear review procedures, removal or amendment about updated standards, and elimination of confusing and contradictory requirements. Staff's opinion and the planning board agreed that this proposed amendment would fit within those considerations. So the planning board, once again, recommended approval, finding that it was consistent with those action items, as well as reasonable in the public interest, since it would clarify the standards for this equipment and the supporting structure. So staff's recommendation is for approval. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. Really, well, it's ordinance maintenance. Typically, this is something, as you all know, we're going through a UDO audit right now. Typically, this is something that I would slot into that audit. However, we've been having issues with permitting, so this is something that staff wanted to go ahead and address, since it is a consistent issue we've run into.
I need to ask a question of Brian. Because of my convoluted intertwine of all the HVAC, do I need to recuse myself?
Only if you feel like you have a direct financial interest in the subject matter.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, I rarely get calls from builders. I got three calls this past month, and two of the builders I did not even know were builders. Called me and told me how difficult it is with the three foot, three and a half feet to do HVAC work, that by all means, Bill, please try to help us on this four foot. So once they made me aware of that, I'm very much happy about what you are bringing to us. No questions for me.
So it seems to be a necessary and logical clarification, and deleting one, well, deleting two portions, striking two portions, and adding six inches makes a world of difference. Do I have that right?
Yes, sir. A small change can be very impactful.
It's like football. It's a game of inches.
Sorry.
Fair enough.
Lisa, do we have anyone who's signed up?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make one. I make a motion to approve the text amendments to section 8.14.7.
This is Hillary White.
I'm so sorry. You have to close the public hearing first.
I'm sorry. Because we don't want spoke. I didn't think that it had to be closed. We'll close the, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Second. Thank you very much. On the favor?
I guess I'll go in there. Thank you.
You're doing a fine job. Moving along. Okay, Bill. It's been a month since you've had to do this. You're okay.
I make a motion to approve the text amendments to section 8.14.7 and 8.14.8 of the Unified Development Ordinance as drafted and to adopt the associated consistency statement.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing two. Matt, you want to take it?
Sure will. This is a proposed text amendment to chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinances. This isn't in the Unified Development Ordinance. This is the Tree and Vegetation Ordinance for the town of Oak Island. So this one has a little bit longer background. In May of this year, the planning board received some comments from a concerned citizen regarding tree placement when new development occurs. Essentially, a large portion of the comments were related to when new development happens, trees are being retained mostly in the rear of the lot, fronts being essentially clear cut. So that was a concern that this citizen brought up. The planning board discussed at their June meeting. We kind of reviewed what other local jurisdictions do as far as tree preservation goes, what are some best practices that we can consider, and what are some potential ordinance changes that they could consider to keep trees near the right-of-way and clarify process standards for property owners, applicants. At that meeting, the planning board requested to initiate a text amendment to address those So at their July meeting, planning board voted to recommend town council adopt a proposed ordinance, and we'll work through what that proposed ordinance was. And then in their August meeting, the Environmental Advisory Committee also reviewed these recommended changes and voted to, for town council to, or to recommend town council adopt the proposed ordinance changes. I'd also point out that as a part of those meetings, the Environmental Advisory Committee's also been working with Rick Patterson, who's our stormwater administrator for other potential updates to this. This was essentially targeted at the concerned citizens' comments for this particular change. So once again, this is kind of a small text-wise change, but it can be quite impactful. The summary of the ordinance is basically to change two things. The first is to define what required site improvements are. This is straight out of our comprehensive land use plan, a recommendation. Our current ordinance has what's called essential site improvements. It does not define what those things are, so it's rather open to interpretation as far as what can be considered for this. So the recommendation is to consider or to define required site improvements as structures, stormwater facilities, utilities, driveways, any grading or fill that's permitted by the town ordinances and is necessary for the development. The other portion of change that we, the planning board recommended, would be to require that a minimum number of trees be saved or restocked within the front setback area. So it's typically a 25-foot setback, that two trees on most lots, it'd be one tree per 25 feet. Most lots are 55 to 60 feet wide. So that would work out to be about two trees in the front setback area. Another thing we discussed was that our current incentives are a bit high. Our current incentive to waive a development permit fee is that someone plant five trees in the front setback area, and the incentive to that is that the development permit fee is waived. That development permit is $100. Five trees, cost-wise, is much more than $100 to actually have those picked out and planted and installed. So we look, take a look at tweaking that. So the new incentive would be if there's an additional tree planted per 50 linear feet, we could waive that development permit fee in order to incentivize not just the minimum, but also planting an additional tree in that front setback area or retaining So this isn't in the UDO, but just an old planner habit, planning board did adopt a consistency statement, partly because the comprehensive land use plan does talk specifically about the tree ordinance. And once again, defining required site improvements is actually straight out of our comprehensive land use plan, but they did find that it was consistent with the land use plan, as well as reasonable and in the public interest. So staff's recommendation is to approve the text amendment and affirm the planning board's statement. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. But once again, the staff's also working on, with the Environmental Advisory Committee, some additional changes coming down the pike.
I have several, if I may, Matt.
Right ahead, sir.
So on page eight, there's a reference to the planning board accepted a modified version of staff recommendations. What was the full version? What was, is there something left out that we're not seeing?
No. So in the staff's recommendation, we had recommended, our ordinance defines a tree as something that's two inches at breast height and 12 feet tall. That was staff's original recommendation. The planning board recommended a specimen tree, which is defined a little bit different in our ordinance. There's a few ways you can qualify as a specimen tree. So that was the change that planning board recommended. That wouldn't necessarily affect if you restock. So if you do have to replant, it's still the same, two inches, 12 feet tall, but to qualify for the retention, it would need to be a specimen tree under what's being recommended.
Okay, thank you.
And that would cut costs as well, correct?
That's correct. Mm-hmm.
So on page 10, there's a list of recommendations that the town take a number of actions. Are all of those actions endorsed by the administration?
These are the actions that are included in your comprehensive land use plan.
So the answer is yes? I just want to be sure.
Sure. I mean, this is the adopted land use plans of the town. If you're asking me if staff would recommend you adopt those at some point in time, it's my job to advocate for those standards that are in the comprehensive land use plan. Yes, sir.
Hey, I want to make sure that the administration is endorsing it, and then therefore, and correct, and please correct me if I'm wrong, therefore, at some point, we should see administrative recommendations to implement these actions, correct? Like for, right?
Do you have any one in particular that you're having a question about?
No, I just, there are a lot of recommendations here.
Sure.
And as a veteran of the CPAC Committee and Land Use Committee, there were, we gave 90 recommendations to council, and many of them didn't receive any action priority. So if these are priorities and we're to act on them, I would hope, and maybe I should direct this to Mr. Kelly, that we're going to get recommendations to move forward. That seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, if there's anything, any of these things that town council wants to move forward on, you know, if we have the consensus of the board to move forward on some of these items, then, you know, we would certainly work on those.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to endorse the list, but I suppose, you know, this list is formidable in terms of the number of things that need to be done. So I would, I would hope that administration would give us the priorities so that we could sort of sequence. Does that make sense?
I understand where you're coming from. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And I have a question for council. So the idea of the streetscape and treescape and the interface between them and requiring trees to be planted in the streetscape seems to me to brush awfully close legally, or am I misjudging that, councilor? Can we require that a treescape be part of the streetscape?
There's no legal prohibition for it. I mean, if you're talking about an overgrown tree that would ultimately obstruct the line of sight, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, Mr. Bach.
What I understand, the intent is to not have a clear-cut frontage that borders the street, that we want to have trees, therefore, treescape, the streetscape.
Right.
Does that move us into legally debatable area, or is that something that we can and should do?
Should do is a policy question. Personally, if you want my personal opinion, yes. I think mature trees enhance a community. There's no legal prohibition against it. I do have a question at some point, but to answer your question, provided that they are maintained and don't present a safety hazard by blocking, you know, your vision on the, everyone's been at a stop sign before where at a corner where you can't see around the corner or something like that, that's a kind of a different question. Our legal authority to require these trees per linear feet like this, at this point, is unquestioned. The General Assembly tinkered with preempting towns' ability to have these type of ordinances this past spring.
That's correct.
It didn't, it didn't make crossover, so as of right now, we can enact these type of ordinances.
If I may, I fully support all reasonable and legally-based efforts to save our tree canopy or expand it. I just don't want us to wander into the gray zone legally, and it sounds like you're saying we're not there.
Yeah. If you made it so stringent that you're significantly reducing the building envelope or the ability for the construction crews, and this is actually replacement, so it's not really, there could be a scenario where someone could argue that it's invading their property rights. I don't think, as proposed, this rises to that level.
I think the members of this council are already receiving feedback from individuals asserting that. That's why I'm asking the question.
I think, as I read this, Mayor President Bach, I think we're within our legal authority to enact this type of text amendment.
And I thank you for your answer, councilor.
Thank you. And I had one question, and I'm not trying, no pun intended, to gum up the works here. You and I talked about this briefly on the phone. I don't see a distance requirement, and I'm not an arborist, but, you know, I do, from my own personal experience, know that if you plant certain type of trees, given the diameter of the root ball, too closely, they'll likely both end up dying. So I don't know if we've looked into that, or we could look into that in the future.
I think that's, I think that's something that would probably be coming down the pike as future considerations with the Environmental Advisory Committee, because it wouldn't just necessarily affect this change. It would affect all.
Sure, sure. That goes to Mr. Bach's. We might want to incorporate that on the page 10 list, but I just, it would be kind of a futile exercise if you can put them on top of each other and then they.
Yeah, right.
You've complied with the ordinance, and they're, they're gone in a year, so, thank you.
And to Mr. Bach, your question, we would not be the only jurisdiction, even in Brunswick County, that has a similar provision in their ordinance, so we would not be alone in this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt, if I may, three or four questions, sir. On page 10, to accomplish this goal, the plan recommends that the town take the following actions. First line, require tree protection standards for preserved trees. That one sentence in and of itself sounds good, but how do we accomplish that?
That's a great question. Would save the broader questions about the tree and vegetation ordinance for when you get some more recommendations from the EAC. Once again, this was a kind of a targeted ordinance request. I know that Mr. Patterson's working on some of these broader questions, planting spaces and how we make sure that trees survive. You know, as far as every recommendation, this is just a list that's in our comprehensive land use plan. I couldn't speak to them all individually in the context of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Last month or the month before, one gentleman came up here and said, and I think this is addressing some of that, that he was required to come up with like 16 trees on his property.
Sure.
And I heard you say just a while ago, two trees in the front yard.
Mm-hmm.
So that would make that man smile to hear that statement, then.
Oh, well, this.
That is no longer on the board, on the table.
Well, this wouldn't change the number of tree requirements required. It would only require that you make sure some of those trees that you are having to put in would be placed in the front setback area.
Minimum of two.
That's, well, depend, one per 25 feet. Most lots, it would be two. That's right. If you had several lots combined into one, you obviously have a bigger lot, and you have to put in more trees.
One last question. To protect the existing trees, what permit process prior to development and what have you is required? They have a vacant lot with 12 trees, and they plan on clearcutting, but maybe saving two or three? How's that process play out?
So any, any development permit gets a tree and vegetation plan that town staff reviews. We review the number of trees that you're planning on keeping, the size of your lot. The, with this, you, we would review the placement of your required site improvements. And if you don't meet the minimum with the trees that you're going to retain, you would need to replant to meet that, so the 16 trees, using that just as an example by illustration. If you had 16 trees on the lot that were going to be retained, fine. If not, we would make sure, one, that they're on that plan, showing where they're going to be replanted, and we check that prior to CO to make sure that they are in or retained. If they're, ones that are to be retained, they're flagged. If they're ones that are being planted, that's pretty easy to tell when somebody just planted a new tree.
And the fast-tracking permit concept is if they comply and do a lot of the things that you would like to see them do early on, their permit would get fast-tracked?
Well, we don't have a fast-track in here, but we do have a waiving of the development permit fee, so you would save, potentially save that $100 application fee for us. That's right.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I didn't see anything in here about outlawing palm trees. Is that, is that?
He had to.
We didn't change this, we didn't change any species requirement, sir.
But I mean, keeping them from planting, never mind. I have a couple of questions for you. Okay, let's just take a scenario. Okay, I got a piece of property. I go out and cut all the trees down. What are you going to do?
Well, one, if you don't have replanting on your tree and vegetation list.
I just cut them all down. What are you going to do?
Oh, is it, are you requiring, are you applying for a development permit?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then you would, we wouldn't issue a development permit until you got your.
Well, what happens if I just go ahead and cut them all down anyway? I mean, without any permit. Let's, let's just say I got a piece of property, okay? I own that piece of property. I go in there and I cut everything down, and then you tell me I need a permit.
You need a permit for development.
Have you already got a house there, or is it empty lot?
No, no, I'm just cutting the trees. How much, what, what comes back on me? What is going to cause me to be cognizant of what's available?
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to pull a permit for that until you showed us a tree and vegetation plan for how those trees are going to be replanted to the minimum standard. And if you did come in to develop that property, you wouldn't be granted a CO until those trees were actually replanted to the minimum requirement. If you just clear it and leave it, so people will come in and get a, just a permit to clear and grade the piece of property, they still show a tree and vegetation plan in that instance, because we require it in the process of your permit. If you aren't going to build it, say you cleared it and sell it to somebody else, and they're going to build on it, well, they can't get a CO until that tree and vegetation plan is implemented and the trees are replanted. So it potentially holds up the next guy from actually being able to build on it.
Okay, now, this $500, what does that, what does that have to do with, when does that come into play?
I'm not sure what you're referring to for $500.
I thought there was a penalty or a fine for $500 if you didn't comply.
It's likely the civil penalty. We didn't look at that as a part of this. I couldn't really speak to that specifically.
Okay. Well, my comment to that was $500 is nothing compared to what they're going to be doing to the property.
Sure.
So that's kind of a waste, in my opinion. The, the right-of-way, I own the property. Can I go out there and plant trees on the, on the right-of-way?
So right-of-way planning would be a function of public works if they're the maintainers of that right-of-way, DOT if it's, if it's DOT.
Right.
So once again, this deals with the property that's being developed. It wouldn't necessarily deal with plantings in the right-of-way. You would have to clear that with the entity responsible for maintaining that right-of-way.
Mark, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. So just to add on to what Councilmember Bach was heading down that direction, I think the action to provide a replacement species list could certainly include an expanded definition about how those species are planted, how to care for them and maintain them, et cetera, et cetera. So we have a streetscape that's appropriately placed with species, native species, hopefully. Second comment, the state, I believe earlier this year, declared the Bradford pear as an invasive species, but yet we have some Bradford pears in our right-of-ways. Is the state planning on doing any action to remove those, or are we responsible for those?
We planted those.
What would we replace them with?
We planted those.
Yeah, so now, all of a sudden, they're invasive, and so what's, you know, do we have a plan, or do we need a plan for Bradford pears?
Yeah, we haven't taken a plan to remove them. DOT hasn't notified us that they'd like for us to remove them, but if council wanted to come back and start putting funds toward tree replacements, that's something that we can consider, then take back to DOT to see if we can take that tree out and plant another tree in its place.
Can we do palm trees?
So, Mark, the state did have a program to incentivize communities for taking out their Bradford pears and replacing them, but it ran out of money before it got very far.
Excellent.
But they did.
So maybe we need to work on our own plan, so, as a part of this action list. Last but not least, I see items in the action list that talk about providing listings and categorization for shrubs and expanding landscape around commercial areas and providing street yard requirements for non-residential development. We advocate on our website something called a smart yard. I've mentioned this before. I think it would be. I think it would be great if we included in, in any of these follow-up actions, if we could try to bring the Smart Yard program and some of these, these action points closer together. Right now, they're miles and miles apart, which makes no sense to me, because if a property owner wants to adopt a Smart Yard, we say that Smart Yards do great things. They help stormwater, they help for, you know, runoff and improvements to the property, and you can landscape potential, you know, areas that are detrimental on your property and make improvement. So maybe we can try to figure out a way in some of these follow-up actions to bring those closer together, whether someone gets some sort of credit for adopting a Smart Yard. Maybe they don't have to plant 20 trees, maybe they plant 12 because they're doing a Smart Yard program, but, so let's just consider maybe bringing those closer together. Right now, I just feel like they're miles apart.
I would consider that neither our incentives nor our penalties go far enough, and I would like to see more done on these bulleted items that are listed. Lisa, do we have anyone to speak?
No, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
You don't even give me a chance. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amendments to Section 32-72, Definitions 32-74C, and 32-76B through G as presented, and to adopt the associated consistency statement.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to amend that motion to include Smart Yard, which Councilman Martin is recommending.
Do you want to word that?
The next bullet point would be addition, actions undertaken to promote and develop Smart Yard.
Add it to this list of goals to accomplish.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to amend my motion to add Smart Yard as one of the goals for the plan to recommend that the town take the following action.
I'll second that, well done.
All in favor?
I'll pull that one right out.
It's unanimous, thank you. Presentations, proclamations, and, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Did you, did you get that, Matt?
I did.
Okay.
Presentations, proclamations, and recognitions. The Environmental Advisory Committee is not presenting tonight, they've asked to be moved to next month. So Chief Morris, it is your turn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Tonight, I would like to introduce Victor Noble, our new community police officer with the Police Department. I'll ask him to step forward, please. So just a little background about Victor, he is originally from New York, and he moved to North Carolina in 2007, where he moved to the town of Wilson, and in 2010, he completed his basic law enforcement training. And he has served with the Smithfield Police Department for a total of nine years, and two of those years was their community resource officer. So we were very fortunate to, to be able to put Victor in this very important position. Victor's been with the Oak Island Police Department for three years on patrol, and was transferred into the community resource position on August 1st. Victor is, has been married for 14 years, and has two children, and he enjoys traveling, Disney, fishing, and playing poker. So that's, that's his hobbies. But Victor has, once we initiated this program, Victor has, came out of the gate running. We had Coffee with a Cop last week, which was a, a success on our part. We were able to meet new people and put names with faces. Victor put that together, and we look forward to many more to come. Just last week, we initiated, or we're starting a faith leader meeting on a bi-monthly basis. Victor will be heavily involved in that program, where the Police Department is engaging the faith leader community here. And so he has already has various events scheduled throughout this year, and we're all, already looking into next summer with the events that we're going to put on, put on with him. So we are thankful that he is here with us, he's a good addition. We understand that he has big shoes to fill with the community resource officer position, but we will absolutely do our best to, to bring to town with a, with a very effective community resource program. So I'm gonna let...
Nice plug, Charlie.
Yeah. Well, you got to get it when you can. So I'm gonna let Victor say a few words, and I think that's, I had two other presentations. Sergeant Paul Harris has retired, and we were, I think there's a proclamation for his service weapon tonight. He is unable to attend. He had some other obligations. And then the Police Department also promoted Sergeant Kristy DeMello to patrol sergeant. So she was on the agenda tonight, something has came up with her as well. So I will come to you tonight with only Victor, so.
Chief, I hope one of you will plug the event on Saturday.
Yes, yeah, I'll, I'll let Victor take care of that one.
Excellent.
Thank you for the reminder.
How are y'all? My name is Victor Denoble, I've obviously been here for three years, and I'm kind of excited to be in this new position. I'm the kind of person that when I find something that I like to do, I, I stick with it. I'm 35 years old, I've been with my wife for 20 years. I had, the first job I had getting out of high school, I went straight to retail and I worked there until I became a police officer. So I just, it's just something I like to do, and I find it and I just stick with it. I've been doing law enforcement for 12 years now, this coming November, mostly Patrol Division, but two years Smithfield, now here in Community Resource Division. I, I enjoy doing it. I just think it helps bring me together with the community, gets me to meet new people, and it's just something we, as a law enforcement, just need to really focus on by getting closer together with our communities. And I, I have fun doing it, which is the reason why I hope to do it for quite a while. One of the events we have coming up, which was something I actually was working with Parks and Rec where I came from, where we called it there was the River Ret Regatta. Here, we're going to do the new event called the Dutchman Dinghy Dash. I just thought it was something cute to do, I was sitting with my wife, who's the, well, the better half of our relationship, and she helped me, after several weeks, come up with this name for it, but it's just going to be a little cardboard boat race, where kids and adults can get together and will build boats, definitely sink, it'll be a lot of fun. It'll be cute, and we'll have a good time with it, but the entry fee is simple, it's just $10 in canned goods that is, hopefully will go to feed another event that I have coming up in November to feed needing families that don't have the money for Thanksgiving meals. It's just, those are the kind of programs and ideas that I'm trying to see that I can build and work towards and have, and just put the name of Oak Island Police Department on. It's just something that I enjoy doing.
And that's at...
That's going to be at the, the Dutchman Creek Park.
At what time?
It was 10:30, I believe.
10:30. I'm trying to get people there for you.
Well, that's for registration. Registration, I want to say is 10 to 11:30. The kids will actually start first, and they'll go in the water about 11:30.
Got it.
I, I'm not used to having to work around tide.
David, is it Bill Smith Park?
And oysters, and tide, and wake, and...
I thought it was.
I think it's moved.
It's a Bill Smith Park, right?
We moved it to the Dutchman's Creek Park. We actually announced that today online. We haven't, it just got promoted about an hour ago, and the reason why is just because it's a more open area, because I do have, I've got, the Brunswick County Sheriff's Office is bringing a real boat, I've got Water Rescue bringing a couple of boats, and I've got, what is it, the Wildlife Resources, they're bringing me their big boat out there, just so we can kind of stop wake from coming in and just topple the kids over, so I needed more room.
Understood.
Remind the public again where Dutchman Creek Park is.
As soon as you, well, right before you hit the boating entry, well, it's right after the boating...
Wildlife Ranch, Wildlife, on Fish Factory Road.
Yep, on the left-hand side.
So it's close to Bill Smith Park?
It's like a couple hundred yards to the left.
Thank you.
Yep.
I've been here, I've been here 42 years, and I was lost. I couldn't figure out where Dutchman Creek Park was.
We're glad to have you here, and thank you for the good work that you're doing.
I appreciate it.
Very much appreciated.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you. I appreciate, I think this is a brilliant idea, I wish I'd thought of it. Anyway, I just, I just want to tell you, this, what you said is absolutely correct, we need to build that bond across the United States, that's the problem. It's been them and us, and we need to build that bond and get us back together again.
Yep.
And I just want to, one other question, was that New York?
Yep.
Okay.
Don't mind him.
I've been here 18 years, I like it. I'm not going back.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, I think we're back to you again.
Just very briefly, I wanted to introduce a new member of the Planning Department, Brady Golden, sitting right there, young fellow in the pink shirt with the ponytail. He's just hired to, just hired to the town August 29th, so he just started, he's a North Carolina native. We hired him to a Planner 1 position, which is an entry-level planning position with the town. He's from Beaufort, North Carolina, is a North Carolina native, graduated just recently from East Carolina University with a degree in community planning and coastal studies, and brings a lot of good knowledge to the town, ECU's an excellent program. He served as the Planning Intern on his summer's home in Beaufort, so he has knowledge about coastal planning issues. His role in our department's going to focus on current planning, typical plan review for single-family homes, small subdivisions, and we're going to work him into more complex stuff as we go, but he's really going to be working on our initiative to make sure that we're processing applications and permits as efficiently and as thoroughly as possible. So we're really excited to have him. He moved down here for us, so please make him feel welcome, as welcome as you made me feel.
Excellent, thank you. And welcome, glad to have you. Adjustment and approval of the agenda, Mr. Kraft.
We need to add the opening for the Environmental Committee.
Yes, I have that.
Can't find it. Committee appointments, I guess it would be three, three, 3.3?
3.3.
Okay.
There's one vacancy for an unexpired term ending in 2023. Is that what we said, Lisa?
Mr. Kraft?
I also would like to remove V4, consideration of proposed text amendment to Section 6.5, remove it at this time, hopefully to bring it back at a later date.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove Item 1.3 for a brief explanation from Mr. Hatton.
Just to clarify, you're just removing it from the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I, I need to ask you all to add something, I'm sorry for the, not giving you a heads-up sooner, but previously, council had contracted with Moffett Nickel to prepare the beach management plan for submission to the CRC, and also asked to review the plan prior to it being submitted, and then we also need to have a public hearing. So to be able to, to handle all of that timing, we've checked with staff with Moffett Nickel, and they would be available for a special meeting on September 27th, 6:00 PM, and then for a public hearing on October 4th, also at 6:00 PM.
September 27th, Lisa?
Yes, and October 4th.
Thank you.
These dates sound okay? Yes?
Absolutely. I have a conflict.
Yes, October 4th.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second, subject to calendar verification from the members of council, that those dates are good.
Thank you.
Are, are we just going to add that as an item of new business?
Yes, that'll just be added as an item of new business, and you can decide what to do with it when you get there.
Okay.
All in favor?
Forget it. No, let's forget it.
I'm checking my calendar.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
I mean, for the new business stuff.
Public comment. General topics and agenda items. As typical, please state your name and, and your address if comfortable doing so. You have three minutes to speak.
Kina Duli?
So I know you're going to be shocked to hear, but I'm going to talk about paid parking, and how much I love it. No, just kidding. I don't love it. So here's my comments for tonight, hopefully they'll be under three minutes, I'm just going to read them. Okay. Making people pay to park their cars will not impact the chaos that is summer parking. It is not about the payment, it is about the identification of parking spaces and the enforcement of parking violations. The argument that paid parking will control the chaos and make the beach safer is just a specious argument. First, let's presume that we all want the parking problems to be solved, we do. And we all want to ensure that it is not only safe to park by the beach, but also accessible to emergency vehicles. We'll all start from that spot. Next, let's look at what causes the chaos or causes a potential safety hazard for emergency vehicles. The chaos is caused by people parking essentially anywhere they want, along any road, in front of any driveway, or on any lot they see. This is a problem because emergency vehicles may not be able to get to an emergency if these cars are parked everywhere. Having people pay to park will not force them to park in a specifically designated space, nor does it keep people from parking on the street or in front of driveways. What will stop people from parking anywhere except designating, designated parking spots? Enforcement of parking violations. So how do we start to control the chaos? We start by determining, sorry, I lost my place. We start by determining where people should not park, and making a parking violation for doing so. For example, most of us recognize that parking should not be allowed along the sides, sides of Ocean and Beach Drive. Keeping these areas clear allows for pedestrians to cross more safely, because there aren't blind spots caused by parked cars. It's also easier for emergency vehicles to respond and get close to the emergency if no one else has parked along the sides of the road. So we start by removing the public right-of-way parking along Ocean and Beach Drive. People who live or rent along Ocean and Beach will be required to park underneath their home or next to their home, but will not be allowed to park on the street. I would also encourage the removal of right-of-way parking along Oak Island Drive and any side of the street where a sidewalk exists. Anyone who parks along the right-of-way will be ticketed and towed. Next, I suggest that we take a look at our existing parking lots and spaces to see where we're missing out on maximizing our parking. For example, I measured a few spaces in the parking lot at 47th and Dolphin. The parking bumpers in this lot are positioned farther apart than the recommended seven and a half to nine feet. The few that I measured were anywhere from 12 feet apart to farther, and I can give you those numbers. If these spaces were taking up 36 feet, we could technically fit four spaces where there are currently three. So we're missing out on parking. I'm not suggesting this is true for every lot, but I am suggesting it's worth looking at. I would also suggest that we eliminate golf cart...
Okay. How much more do you have to go?
Um, like two paragraphs, like two short paragraphs. You want me to do it real fast?
Can you summarize those quickly?
Yeah, essentially, golf carts, same thing, they're subject to all the motor vehicle laws, they should fall into the same parking rules. We could add spaces, so a golf cart is currently about 11 feet, is the space that we're given. We only need three more feet to make those spaces, and if we change all of our lots to one-way lots, we can, again, increase our spacing as well there.
Thank you very much. Next.
Andy Spradley?
Good evening, Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast Sixth Street, here representing the Oak Island Beach Preservation. On September 6th, the Oak Island Beach Preservation Society welcomed some new members to our board. Bill Van Lou, Sandra... Bill Van Lou, Sandra Hill, Eileen Keats, Sherri Lyons, Lee Ann Lyons, and Michael Evans joined our team. So we look forward to having these new leaders to help carry on Oak Island Beach Preservation's mission. And speaking of new members, tomorrow at September 14th, there is a free public lecture by Dr. Liz Fuller. She will present the story of Jesse Stevens Taylor and Hurricane Hazel. Again, this is September 14th, 7:00 PM at 801 Ocean Event Center. That's right next to the Oak Island Pier. If you plan to come, please register on our webpage or our Facebook page. And again, this is free. And on Saturday, the 17th, not to step on any toes with a cardboard derby floater. Starting at 8:30, the International Coastal Cleanup begins. This is a global movement with six million volunteers in ninety countries and across the United States. We're going to meet at the Cabana at Southeast 46th Street. But again, please register on our website or Facebook because we can assign you the area of the beach we would like you to clean ahead of time. We just need you to come and check in after that. We'll provide bags, gloves, that sort of thing, but we advise people to be, bring comfortable clothes, wear their sunblock, and be ready for a warm day. We look forward to seeing you there. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for all beach preservation does.
Hi, I'm Nancy McMurray, 6607 West Beach Drive, and I'm here again to talk about reducing the size of large homes on the island. I was here and spoke at the last meeting on the 16th. I would like to make a few new points. That our Oak Island Code of Ordinances has a definition of a hotel, and it states that if it's in a residential zoning district, this definition includes any structure permitted after the date of adoption of this ordinance for temporary or permanent occupancy by more than fourteen individuals if the property is available for temporary rental to the general public. This is in our Code of Ordinances. We have a commercial recreation zoning district, and this is the district that is the purpose that it is going to provide for, protect, and encourage a grouping of beachfront enterprises providing accommodations and recreation to persons wishing to lodge near the strand or participate in various water sports. This is where hotels need to be, in a CR zone, not an R7 zone, which is where they're currently being given a special use permit to be built. Also, these large homes that have been approved or being approved, they are supposed to be in harmony with the area in which it's located and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. And I find that this is not the case. This is not what's happening. At the last meeting, Councilmember Martin effectively hijacked the discussion and presented over an hour of his statistics and declared that the current limits on our house sizes are sufficient, and it's all working just fine. I beg to differ. At best, his presentation was misleading. We've all heard the quote, "lies, damn lies and statistics." At worst, his presentation was offensive. His delivery insulted our planning director, our planning board, and his constituents that disagreed with him. A rental home for over fourteen people is considered a hotel. As I mentioned, it is a disturbance to people that live next door to a house that's renting to thirty-plus people. You can have the same number of people dispersed over several lots, several different houses. But if you live on this island, you should not be subjected to living next to a hotel if that's not the appropriate zoning. Thank you for your time. And I did want to have one question from Mr. Eads, Councilor Eads, that the Code of Ordinances also states that there's a conflict of interest. If somebody has a close familial business or other associated relationship, then they should not be voting on a matter. And I feel like they do have an interest if your family members own several HVAC businesses and you're hoping to get developers to use your services. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I think one of the things you need to take into consideration when you make a statement up here is respect. I don't think there was a part in there that wasn't very respectful, and I think it's something we need to take into consideration. We can agree or disagree, but we need to be respectful.
You think she wasn't? Did you think she wasn't?
Who accused him of being hijacking?
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing.
That was just public comments. We don't need a motion. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along.
Exactly.
And next, Lisa?
We didn't have any more.
Counsel reports. I'd like to take the liberty of starting, if I may. I want to express my appreciation for the public's patience demonstrated during the exceptionally long August 16th meeting. As a one who's responsible for presiding over town council meetings, it's my expectation going forward that everyone will abide by the council's code of ethics at all times and self-regulate in respect to time consumed when speaking to any particular issue. I also particularly appreciate the thoughtful concerns presented at the paid parking special meeting and the respect whichwith that they were expressed. All in all, it was a fruitful learning exercise for council. Mr. Kelly, Councilman Bach, and Blaylock, and myself, with several members of the, met with several members of the business community to hear questions and learn of any concerns they have about the prospect of paid parking. Again, it was a very productive discussion. Several of us will meet with representatives from Holden Beach on the 21st, and in the future, will also meet with the rental agencies. So we're very much in a learning mode, and we appreciate the suggestion that we reach out and gain knowledge and experience from other towns as well as collect input from those who'll be impacted. And as some of you may know, the VFW held a well-attended memorial service for the heroes who died on September 11th on 2001, those who have since lost that good fight from the aftermath of the chemical exposure, and those who continue to grieve for their loved ones. I had the privilege of speaking at that event, and it was very well done. And with that, I pass to Mr. Bach.
Yes, thank you. And I would concur. The business meeting was productive, and I look forward to talking to, in quotes, "our sister communities" about their experience with paid parking, both the challenges and also the things that they have managed to put in place that are productive. I would love to keep talking about paid parking, but I feel an obligation to comment on the last meeting. There certainly has been incredible public comment that I've received. It runs the gamut from incredulity, how could this happen? Why did it just go on, to indignation. And I'm mindful of Reagan's 11th commandment that I don't want to speak ill of my colleagues, so I'm not going to do that because I've expressed my concerns directly to him privately. But I do want to lift up our standards, and I would hope that all of us are going to affirm that we're going to go forward with the same set of standards. So our code of ethics requires, it obligates us, to respect everyone who comes before this council, every citizen, every vendor, and surely it requires respect for professional staff and for citizen volunteers who are serving the community. If anything, they deserve deference. They didn't get it, and that's wrong. We need to correct that. The code of ethics is one thing. The rules of procedure are very clear. The mayor, whomever he or she is, it does not matter. And I've lived through four different mayors, actually five. They are the presiding officer of the meeting, period, end of story. They rule on motions. They decide what's in order, what isn't. They set time limits, and they are to be heeded. That's the obligation we all have. That's the form that we use to go forward. And lastly, in my five years, almost five years on this council, we have had a norm, a custom, of civility, even when in dispute. And civility is important. And I would say this, I understand passion, and on some things I am very passionate. But passion needs to be surrounded by decorum and restraint so as not to transgress that imaginary line. And that includes sharing documents and ideas, the entirety of council, so that we're not left looking at something we have no idea what it is. We haven't done that. And if someone said to me, "This is the nadir for council. We've never had a meeting go this long, go off the rails like that." And I don't want it to happen again. I'm ready to move on because I think we essentially are committed to the same thing as public service. We want to get things done, done the right way, that enhance the quality of life for citizens. So I'm hoping that we can close that chapter. I know a lot of people still want to talk about it. I don't. But that's my statement. I want to move on.
Obviously, I must have been at a different meeting than everybody else. What I saw was passion. I didn't see any more talking than what is normally done at this council meeting. It was certainly not the longest council meeting that we've been at. I see more disrespect at this meeting bashing one of our own than I did at that meeting, but that's just me.
Mr. Kraft?
Blessed are the peacemakers. Here I come. Tourist season, we put it behind us. I want to do a shout-out. The police department, very good job. Beach services, beach ambassadors, the patrols up and down the beach, excellent job, police department. Fire department, excellent job, fire department. Water rescue, excellent job, water rescue. We had some setbacks, had some drownings that disrupted some families, turned their life upside down forever. But our personnel did an exceptional job during tourist season, and I want to give them a shout-out. But it goes beyond the police, the fire, the water rescue. Sean Berry, the drone operator, hey, get off the dune, person in a blue shirt, get off the dune. Heather and Ryan at the rec department, wow. Concerts every Friday night, farmer's market, car shows, splash pad, all the things the Parks and Rec Department does. Wow. I thought Rose Braun was just the lady I'd say hi to in church on Sunday. Once I got up here, I found out, as Reggie Jackson says, "She is the straw that stirs the drink." If you want to know anything that's going on in the town, ask Rose. Rose, how do I do, put this on my cellphone? How come I can't get my email? Where can I find a piece of paper? Rose, behind the scenes, gets everything done. Scott gets tired of me saying this, but every time you tell public works something is broken, they address it that day or the next day. Wow. Steve Edwards and Matt, ask them a question. They don't say, "I have to get back to you." They say, "The answer to that question is such and such." Brian Eads, town attorney, the very same way. You ask him a question, he doesn't say, "Let me look that up." He gives you the answer on the spot. All this stuff goes on to make our town run so smoothly. And I want to give all those people a shout-out. Two more things. All our bills get paid and all our money gets collected because David Hatton sees to it behind the scenes when nobody's looking. Everything gets done properly. All of this stuff is under the umbrella of our town manager, David Kelly, who juggles ninety balls and sees to it. Everything gets done smoothly. You don't hear about all the things that go wrong because somebody takes care of it. So we have an exceptional town, and I just wanted to give them a shout-out because they deserve it. I want to say one other thing. Mark Martin is my friend. Last month, I went home. I was uncomfortable during the town council meeting, and I went home with uneasiness in my stomach. As Councilman Bach said, I want to go forward. I want all five of us to work together. We all want to get things done. We all want to do what's best for the town of Oak Island. I want to put everything behind us, go forward. I often talk about a softer, gentler town because that's a fun town to live in, so I want to strive for a softer, gentler town. That's all I got.
I think I've said all I need to say tonight.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Just two quick items. First of all, congratulations to everybody. I think we had a great tourist summer, especially when it came to golf carts. I think the increased enforcement of golf cart operations and the additional education, the signage that we put out, I think it was working. Chief Morris posted a report on the Oak Island PD page, and it looked like that they're doing a great job. Looks like seatbelt enforcement is probably one of the more common issues, and of course, parking. But I just think that if we just continue with our education program and the signage is working and enforcement, that we'll continue to see improvements in that area around golf cart operations and hopefully have continued safe summers. Secondly, I was fortunate to get an invite from the chief to attend the faith leadership meeting. It was an incredible opportunity. I can't tell you enough how strong the churches and faith-based organizations we have within the town of Oak Island are and how they step up to take care of the needs in the community. If you're not aware or engaged, get involved because they are ready, and they have been and are ready to step up and do more. We talked about how to incorporate a lot of Victor's ideas, and I just thought it was a wonderful opportunity. So I just wanted to thank the chief for making sure I was included in that. Just as a reminder, for those of you who may have forgotten, in addition to being in town council, I'm a chaplain with the Brunswick County Sheriff's Office, so I was able to bring some insight into things that we're doing in the county and how that impacts our community as well. Brunswick County is a mutual aid response, and that includes the Chaplain Corps as well. So I was happy to be included in that, and thank you again.
Thank you. We'll move from reports then to the consent agenda. We have three items. Approval of the minutes from June 14th. Consideration of recommending a change to the planning board rules of procedure. And approval of the budget ordinance amendments that are identified in the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
As amended.
I believe Mr. Bach removed I-3 from the agenda.
As amended, 1.3 is removed. Yes.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Committee appointments.
You go to I-3 first.
We need to have Mr. Hatton come up and explain the budget ordinance that Mr. Bach pulled off.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. It's good news. So he's got good news to start with, so here we go.
Let him speak then.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bach?
There's never enough good news. I just wanted the public to hear. Please proceed.
Okay. On all of them or just the one?
You can highlight them if you'd like.
The first one that we have is, we got a large sediment federal grant of $12,296. Again, it's not huge money, but we take the position if there's grant money out there, we go for it. So this paid for some of Moffett Nickel's engineering costs, so always offset that. Another thing, the second one we have is for the lockwood folly dredging. I have a budget amendment there for $175,000, which I have in appropriations. And this was originally supposed to be done next year, but the Corps of Engineers pushed it up, so we were able to get the work done down there, and we will get the sand, as you can see, in there, 150,000 cubic yards out of lockwood, so that's a good news story also for the West End. So that's a good news story also for the West End. The real good news that I've got, I got a $5 million payment from the state of North Carolina. The first one of the four that we're going to receive from the 20 million grant that most everybody's aware of. So, yes, it was a good day when that 5 million hit. I ran up and down the hallway.
That's a lot of zeros.
I can see the sneaker marks, yes, thank you.
Exactly.
Now, does that go into an interest-bearing account?
I'm sorry?
Does that go into an interest-bearing account?
It will. I'm going to meet with Truist next week with their investment people.
Excellent.
And we'll see, because the state says, you know, if we make any interest in investments, it's our money, and so if we can put more money towards the 20 million, which will go towards the sand, it's all good.
Excellent, good job.
Thank you.
It's money. Okay, committee appointments. Thank you for that, David, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we still need a motion to approve the budget ordinance amendments.
We still do, okay. Even though we took it off the, okay, I see what we're doing.
I make a motion to approve the budget ordinance amendments to appropriate funds received from the large sediment sampling federal grant, to appropriate NCD, DE, and R funds received from the state of North Carolina for beach renourishment, and to appropriate funds to cover the cost of the AIWW maintenance strategy as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Hatton.
Okay, once more, third time's a charm, committee appointments. Appointment to the Part III Advisory Committee, there are two terms available, one ending in January 2024 and one in January 2023. We have one applicant, Gay Borchert, is that right? Do we want to do this all at once?
Counsel's pleasure.
Why don't we do that, and then we just vote once? And if you don't mind, then putting them, summarizing those votes. Second is an appointment to the planning board, one vacancy for an unexpired term ending August 2024. One position, two applicants, David Bradley and Charles Warren. And then the third, which is in addition to the agenda, an appointment to the environmental advisory committee. It's one term ending in 2024?
Three.
Three.
Yes.
One applicant, David Sonnenfeld. So if council would vote for their preferences, and then...
Mayor, I'd like to point out, if there's one person for the Part III Advisory Committee, but there's two positions, I would like to honor Gay Borchert for the, till the 2024 term.
Would be fine with me. Do we need any particular action?
I would just put somebody into a longer term.
Okay.
Automatically.
Thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, just as a reminder, everyone needs to sign their ballot.
Thank you for that. David, are you going to collect those, or do we just want to pass them to the left?
Already got them, she's counting.
Already down there, got it.
David was...
You're fast.
I know you had to see me walk by.
So gay.
So stealthy.
Invisibility cloak.
Okay, Mayor, for the first one was the Par III Advisory Board, unanimous for the single applicant, Gay Borchert, and I'll contact her about that. The second appointment was for Planning Board, with four votes for David Bradley from John Bock, Sheila Bell, Bill Kraft, and Mark Martin, and a single vote for Charles Warren from Charlie Leelock. So Mr. Bradley is appointed to that board. And for the single position on the environmental advisory committee, unanimous in favor of the applicant, David Sonnenfeld.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all the appointees. Administrative reports, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, ma'am, I got Mr. Hatton, and Mrs. O'Brien is going to make her presentation. Hatton, you want to come up first? He's got your fiscal year to date.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Okay. What I've given to you, counsel, is just a comparison of the fiscal year 2122 to 2021, just highlighting some of the revenue items that we have. Property tax, when you initially look at that, it looks like we went down 253,000. In actuality, we went up 466,000, because you may recall, we had a different tax rate from this year, so that accounted for that. When I first put this on paper and I saw that, I kind of panicked, but then I remembered what we had with the tax rate change. When you get old, you forget a lot of things. Local option sales tax, we increased over the prior year $628,000, or 24% increase. As I've told you before, our sales tax collections are still remaining strong, and yet reflects it there. Water utility revenue is up approximately 12%, and that's just from the growth of the houses that are being built on the island, as you well know. Sewer utility revenue is up 125,000 from on usage, so again, there's growth there. Stormwater stayed about the same, solid waste, we increased our revenues there. But we had worked on the rates in a prior year, so that's what reflects why we do an increase. Now, the good news that I think is on accommodations tax revenue. The 3% tax increased $886,000. The 2% beach tax fund increased $590,000, or a 46% increase on accommodations tax. It's, I know we all get aggravated with the tourists, but that's what reflects from the tourists being here on this island, that sales tax increase and that. That's going to go, you know, that's money that we're going to be able to put towards the beach, you know, add to the beach sand fund. Peer revenue, again, it had a good, strong year. Their sales increased $108,000, that includes 801. So the peer continues to remain strong, good leadership up there. As long as we don't have a hurricane, that's, you know, that's our big kicker. That's, oh, no, shh, that's our big kicker every year.
Almost made it, could have said bad story.
I'm not going with it. But golf course, I've said before, the golf course is hanging in there. We are spending money, we're trying to do everything we can for the golf course. We've improved the equipment that's up there. Jonathan, who's the manager up there, seems very knowledgeable, and he's trying, he works really hard on it, I believe. The Par III is just a Par III, you know, it's, there's a reason golf courses across the United States are closing. They're very expensive to operate, and it reflects that. And one last item, again, on accommodations tax, and that's not reflective in the numbers I gave you, but in August of last month, we had accommodation tax for the first time over $1 million. First time ever. So that shows you the people that are coming to this island. Any questions?
Mr. Hatton?
Yes, sir.
Besides smiling big time, can I, I am smiling big time. The accommodation tax and beach tax, was that just a lower number and a bigger increase because we were conservative in our guestimate?
No, that's actually revenues that I gave you, but yes, on the budget, it was conservative.
Good, wow.
And we're still, as you may recall, well, a couple of years ago, when we had all the COVID issues, we went real conservative on the budget. We did not want to overspend, or say we were going to have cash, and we didn't.
That's excellent.
So we're finding possibly $2 million more a year than what?
Yes.
Quickly closing the gap on that sand beach model we put together.
Exactly, exactly. Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hatton.
Yes, ma'am, how are you?
How are y'all doing?
Good.
Good evening. I'm actually here with an update on the skate park, the Kevin Bell Skate Park, and then an announcement about a survey. So the Kevin Bell Skate Park, we actually have some drawings up, and we have a tentative start date of October 2022, that's this October. That's, you know, next month, it's very exciting. A conservative construction time of four months. So we feel happy saying that the park opening would be March 2023. We did add an extra month, if you're counting months, just in case.
Very exciting.
Yes, it is very exciting.
Yeah, I just got to skateboard, so.
And even with all the increase in building costs for everybody else, we're still locked in at the 300,000.
Correct. So we're locked in at the 300,000, and they are to deliver the design that they've shown as well.
So this is the actual, not conceptual?
Yes, it is. And actually, what you're looking at there with the concrete along all four sides, that's the current footprint that it has, so we're not adding anything. And actually, once they looked at it, they said that the skate park was a little too flat, and they needed to be able to grade it a little bit better, so we are going to go pour some concrete. So that's why the size did shrink a little bit. But then what that does on that outer L, it allows for beginner skaters or for skaters trying new tricks, and then they've put a few elements down there as well.
That's very exciting.
I agree.
Good job.
Are there any questions about the skate park?
Questions for skate parks, Ms. Haron?
Then we'll just move right along. Another exciting thing that we have coming up is the rec center renovation in addition, which we'll hear about in a few minutes. But what the citizens can do is take the survey that we have. We have a survey that's going to be starting this Friday. You do have to go online to take the survey. There's a link, and Mike will be sending information out. But once you get on, you take the survey, and what we're going to do with the survey is a few things. We are going to figure out if we're headed in the right direction with the design that we have for the building. And also, we're going to be able to take that survey and put it into grant applications. So this is where we, obviously, getting more information from the citizens is what we want. In addition to that, the more citizens we have that fill the survey out, the higher points we get in our grant applications. So citizens filling this out helps us in two ways.
Do you have the survey questions with you?
I do.
Can you share those?
I can, yes. There's 15 questions, there are some demographic questions.
Sorry, I didn't ask you that in advance, but way to go.
That's great, no, no problem. Mr. Kelly indicated I should have them, I can't take credit for that. I think Mike Emery might be pulling it up. He is.
Can we ask Mike Emery to also send it out on the blast once it's ready?
He's going to send it out everywhere. Facebooks, Twitter, Tweeter, whatever the word is.
Twitter, whatever that is.
Twitter, Twitter.
Right. So question one, how many people currently live in your household, counting yourself? And when that drops down, there's a few options to choose. Then age groups, question two. In the following age groups below, please indicate the total number of persons within your household that fall into each age group. Question three, in the past 12 months, which of the following activities have you or anyone in your household participated in? And then you can check, if you've done all of them, check them all. Question four, which five of the recreation programs listed in question number three do you and members of your household use most often? And again, now we're trying to figure out, we're just trying to narrow it down a little bit more. Number five, in the past 12 months, how often did you or members of your household visit the Town of Oak Island Recreation Center? Number six, are there any recreation activities which are not currently offered by the Oak Island Recreation Department that you or members of your household liked to participate in? Now we're to the programs and facilities portion. So these are scaled questions, so obviously, very satisfied, satisfied, somewhat satisfied, not satisfied, or not applicable. And we're asking in this about the recreation programs currently offered, the cardio room, the weight room, the free weight room, outdoor basketball court. And then feel free to provide comments to support your ratings. Age groups, please rate your level of satisfaction with activities provided by the Recreation Department for each age group. And then it goes, breaks it down. And again, you're scaling very satisfied through not satisfied. Number nine, how do you learn about the town's recreation programs and activities? 10, please rate your satisfaction with the overall value your household receives from the Recreation Department. 11, are there any reasons that keep you or other members of your household from using the town's recreation facilities? And there's a list there, and then if one wasn't provided, you can add your own or explain your answer. And then it's, again, a scale, strongly support to strongly oppose. At what level do you support the town utilizing public funds for expanding or improving the recreation center? And so that's building in addition, renovating existing structure, building in addition, and renovating the existing structure. And then number 13, what do you think of when you hear Town of Oak Island Recreation Department? And number 14, please provide any additional comments you may have regarding recreation facilities and programs in the town of Oak Island. And then what is your town residency status? So a few things to know about this. Once somebody fills this form out, it's going to go straight into my email and also make Emery's. One thing that we were asked to do was to make sure that there is only one survey submission from each IP address. So if you're at your house and you really love basketball, the outdoor basketball court, and that's something that's important to you, we need to hear about that, we want to hear about that. But please only submit it one time, because what's going to happen is if we have duplicate surveys from an IP address, we're going to just take the very first submission. A better use of your time would be to talk to your friends and your family and your coworkers about going home and taking the survey themselves.
Good questions, Heather, if I may.
Sure.
Once you get these surveys in, how will that adjust what we're getting ready to hear on our next presentation about the new addition to the rec center?
So...
How will you adjust the data or the information you get?
Sure. So what you're about to hear is that the phase one will be the restrooms, and that's the thing that's coming up soonest. And that doesn't start until January, so we still have some time to wiggle and adjust. I don't think it would change the footprint very much. I think we're kind of, with the amount of money that we have, the space that we have, we're kind of locked into that. What it might change is how we reconfigure the existing building, and it might also change what we put in the addition.
Are these questions dictated by the grant approval people? Is that the type of questions they want to see, or is that the type of questions we just wanted to sit down?
They're pretty, they're an industry standard, really, when you're looking for new facilities and you're trying to evaluate. So honestly, having a new facility can do one of two things. We can strengthen the programs we already have, or we can start a whole new crop of programs. And so we're wanting to find out at this point, it's kind of like a starting off point for us. We're wanting to know, are we what you need, or are there things we need to adjust?
But you think, once we get the answers to these survey questions, the answers are those... But you think, once we get the answers to these survey questions, the answers to those survey questions will hopefully entice or impress the, the grant people? Because of the questions we ask and the answers we receive.
Sure, so what they're looking for is participation. So again, the more people that fill out the survey, they're saying, okay, well, this community is invested in the Recreation Department or the facility that they're looking to, to build or renovate. The second part is, are they satisfied with what they've already gotten, so they're going to be bought in? And so that's why we ask those questions. And then the demographics, they're wanting to see, are we giving this money to a group that is diverse? And that's why we ask questions about ages and, and the types of program we're doing.
Good deal, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment, I, I would assume that responses to the questions may not change the physical structure of what's being planned, but could change potentially how it's outfitted and how it's utilized on the inside. You know, we've talked frequently about the insignificance of not only having the money to just get the structure built, but then how do we accommodate activities inside the building? So I, I see the survey maybe influencing that.
For sure.
More so than the, the physical structure that we're.
Right, I think we're pretty locked into that footprint for funds and for the location that we're in.
Right.
I agree, yes.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys.
Well done.
That's all for now, ma'am.
That's it? We move to old business. Discussion of status on recreation center upgrades. Set back to Heather.
There's EB.
Matt and EB.
Would you like to step on up? Introduce yourself, please.
Evening, Mayor, members of City Council, my name's Matt Williard. I'm an architect in Wilmington, I'm here with my colleague EB Pankook, who's a structural engineer. And can we get the?
Yeah, he's pulling.
There we go. What you see here is a floor plan that represents a concept of how to renovate and expand the recreation center. To the right is the existing approximately 10,000 square foot rec building, and to the left, colored orange, is the expansion. The three colors represent the phases of construction of the renovation. And the concept of the design that you see is to really convert this building to a full recreation exercise facility. The blue in the center portion of the existing building is phase one, and that is basically expanding and upgrading the existing restrooms and shower and locker facilities with the remaining space being allocated for storage. There's a definite lack of storage in this building. To the left is the expansion, roughly 6,400 square feet. We have a, a vestibule that would connect the, the two masses. And in that vestibule is a, a, a men and women restroom, and then we have a small basketball court. That box is roughly, is 60 by 100. We have a basketball court that's a little bit shorter than a middle school court, it's 70 feet long, 42 feet wide, which is the width of a middle school basketball court. So you could have pickup games and things like that. There's eight foot circulation aisle around the perimeter, big enough for some chairs, coaches if needed. And to the north, we have a small kind of warming kitchen for, not necessarily for cooking meals, but for, you know, bringing in catered food and having an area to prep it to bring out into the gym if there, if there's a meal or in, if emergency services are using the gym for, as a staging area. And then we have a storage room for possibly a portable stage, chairs, tables. And then above that, we would have a mezzanine for our mechanical systems. And then the remainder of the existing building, phase three, would be taking some of the classrooms to the, on the right side and converting those to administrative offices. The current admin office would stay as it is, and the current meeting space would. And then to the left, we have, these two rooms are currently exercise equipment and weights. We would convert that, those two spaces to all kind of cardio equipment. And then that, the large meeting room would be converted into a weight room with free weights and weight machines. So that's phase one, two, one is bathrooms, two is the gym, and three is the renovations to the existing building. Mostly cosmetic, new floors, paint, ceilings, lights. And then that slide did, if we could see the elevations just briefly, this large mass to the left here represents the, and this is very schematic, but the, the volume of a gymnasium, you know, you have a 20-foot clear ceiling height with trusses above and ductwork and lights. And then there's the, the, the vestibule connecting the two buildings. So if you have any questions?
One question might be for Mr. Hatton first. The bathroom, phase one.
Mm-hmm.
The bathroom renovations and upgrades, is that in the $75,000 budget that was last year? Okay.
May I ask several design questions?
Sure.
So I'm, I'm assuming the, what we're calling a gymnasium is really a multi-purpose space? And I'm assuming it's a composition floor, non-friction?
We, we discussed just a polished concrete, but I mean, we're open to.
Is it, is it wood, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It is not wood right now, it's, it's kind of a polished concrete, but.
Okay.
There, there are a lot of options for different types of sports floors.
Yeah. Being familiar with basketball for many, many years, you want a composition surface that's soft on joints and non-friction and can convert to multiple uses. I'm curious, how big is the meeting room on the other side?
That's the existing meeting room, it's, I'm just guessing, it's probably around 15 by 20-ish?
Right, because you have five offices and then a meeting room.
It's, really, it'd serve like as a break room for staff.
So if we wanted to have a public meeting here, we'd have to convert the gymnasium space into a meeting space? Is that the theory of this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, this, I think our concept, Heather, is mainly recreation, I'm not, if the building is going to accommodate public meetings other than in the gymnasium.
Well, theoretically, if it's a public space, recreation has a kind of elasticity to it in terms of groups that might come, might want to meet, might congregate there. So this would stretch, right? You mentioned having tables and chairs and the storage there.
Mm-hmm.
You've got the ability to provide some form of food into that space, right? You've got the ability to make it basketball, make it badminton, to make it a lot of different kinds of recreational enterprises, right?
Yes.
But is it going to have netting, can it be divided?
We've discussed that, and that hasn't been a, a hard decision that's made yet.
Okay, so you could have two separate courts.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to have only two backboards or four?
Right now, just two.
Okay. All right, and how big is the storage space? What kind of equipment are you envisioning going in there?
Tables, stackable tables and chairs and a, and a portable stage, I guess that would fold up and, and roll in. That storage space is roughly 30 by 15.
Okay. Because there would be some program requirements, depending on what, what sport you were featuring at what time in there, right?
Right.
Yeah, so you, you anticipated that as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
At, at one point, there was a suggestion to consider an elevated walking slash running track, like is available at UNC Wilmington's campus in their multi-purpose building. I guess that kind of fell outside of what we can do or the structure of the building or the budget that's remaining. Because I recall, I think in the last survey, some sort of indoor track was pretty high on the list, I think. Was it Heather, or it was, it was a candidate, I think, for sure on the last survey, that there was an indoor track-type concept that was desirable. One, more safer for the public to walk or jog indoors versus on some of our streets. And then two, of course, all weather permitting, so.
I think even if you stayed with the footprint of the facility as it's drawn, you would still require two sets of stairs and probably an elevator.
Yeah.
To accommodate an, an upper story track.
Tough to squeeze all that in there.
And the height would have to raise as well, 10 feet, 8 feet?
I would say, I would raise it because, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure that gym is, is large enough. I mean, if the track were eight feet, it would come to the edge of, of the basketball playing court. And from what I've seen, like, I, I've, I've worked on the rec center at UNCW, like it, that track is backed off of the courts quite a bit.
Right.
Their runout is, from the end of the basketball court is probably 20 feet.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there's no doubt it's a larger facility, but, okay, thanks.
Question for Heather. So 60 by 100-foot addition box, you shared from yesterday. So during the day, you'll have it set up, 10 o'clock to noon is for zumba, noon to 12 is for yoga, 2 to 4 is for basketball? That type of, that's what your thinking is? Okay.
So going back to, I know you, you said you've considered it, being able to divide this court and put different activities on different sides of it, right? Would, would seem to be important, because you, you maximize your, your potential recreational activities. And also having a floor that you can tape over, right? So you could put tennis on one side, pickleball on the other, badminton, you know, you can configure it by taping it, right? Because you don't want a floor with multiple lines, it's confusing the players, especially basketball players. But you want something that you could manipulate the space to fit, fit the recreational activity, so. And usually, that's just a curtain that's drawn across, right?
Yeah, a heavy curtain.
Simple hydraulic or, even a hand crank would probably do it. Okay.
I'm curious about the logic to put a basketball court that isn't full size as opposed to classroom space where we have currently art and quilting and board games, meeting space for some of our smaller clubs and things. So I, I, I love the renovation of the front part of the building, but I'm wondering if we're really getting the maximum use with this current configuration, given all of the activities that currently go on at the rec center.
Yeah, that'd be, excuse me, that would be something that council would have to look at, and then the survey will come back and show you the items that people are looking at to address. The basketball court, there's a basketball court there now that we're getting ready to cover up, that's the reason why you have the basketball court there. We looked at the configuration of the land that we have and where the setbacks are and what we can turn, which way.
Back up one second, so you said we're covering up our existing basketball court?
The back building.
The one that's outside currently?
The one in the back behind the rec center.
Okay, got it, okay, that one.
That one's, that one's underneath this one. So that was the reason why the basketball court went back in, because we were taking away that program.
Yep.
The dividing walls and being able to close down things, that's a, a doable thing for us to be able to put something in. But the renovation, like you said, in the front is needed, the office space are needed. We added the bathrooms in the foyer area to, we added extra doors so we could have one part open all the time and not be able to get to the admin offices. So we did look at things, the kitchen that he addressed, emergency food storage or fruit service for those. And then the stage for the good old boys on Friday night to be able to play or whatever, that would be stored there in the storage. So it could be broken out into probably two different areas. I don't know if we want to start having rollable walls everywhere that we have and have, break it into four rooms, but I could see where one divider breaking into two sections may be feasible for us. But we have to go back and say, do we want it to be a recreation, recreation activities? Or do we want to, you know, build the classrooms or, it's something for council to weigh in.
I also don't see a receptionist or a person who would be signing them in or a.
They're still in the same spot.
Yeah, on the right.
Yeah, with the window.
The very front, when you come in the front door.
I got it.
That doesn't change.
Receptionist right there, there's a, that is all glass on that corner with a sliding window.
Yep.
Got it.
My elephant in the room, I've heard that a lot of the projects where people come to the rec center to use the facilities are no longer going to be used there, but will start being used at the 801 Center. Can we address that?
Those are the things that we've asked Lisa to look at for scheduling. They may be noon or from 9 until noon or something, and then the afternoon activities will be something that other people utilize. But there's ways that we can work that into the 801. The reason why we haven't really pushed that too much is the stormwater, but we're getting ready to fix that stormwater, hopefully this, this fall and the spring. So once that's handled, then Lisa wouldn't have as many restraints on her for the rain events or things like that. So the morning times could be open to be able to have something.
In, in that vein, 801 Center is a $250, $350 an hour event center if you want to have a wedding reception, would the price be the same?
No, council would have to look at each activity that goes on there. Those things are, would be totally different than a Zuma class or something like that, or a bridge or whatever else we have down there at rec center right now.
But the groups that are paying now $20 or something like that to use the rec center would be paying $100 for the 801 Center possibly.
That would be y'all's decision to make.
Glad you found a lot of money, Mr. Hatton.
Yeah, my concern is, is that the, what is now identified as a gymnasium isn't going to support the activities that we currently have. I can't imagine them changing, but I hopefully will take that into consideration.
The Charles, he gave us something to work with, was what we asked him for. So now it's up to council to make the decision if you want him to put another wall or not another wall.
Understood.
Matt, were you given a, a money figure as to what to work with?
It was, at, at this point, I would say no, I mean, it, this is, reflects what our meetings.
Yeah, we gave them, we gave them a rough range of where we're looking at, and then we gave them some ideas of where we were, then we had a few meetings with them. And they came down and drew out a few things for us. EB had come down and looked at the heating and air and electrical and those kind of things to see where we needed to upgrade. So basically, we were just trying to get something laid out for council to start considering the needs that Heather has currently. And then look at the recreation activities going forward is what we've tried to lay out. And then we've taken into consideration, we're able to leave probably two of the three big trees the way we have it laid out right this minute. We may have to shift it north or south a little bit, but those kind of things, we're still trying to preserve in the same area as well.
And you'll have a better idea once the surveys come in.
Right.
Well, next month, we'll learn a lot.
You'll learn, I mean, the surveys will come in, you'll see the needs, and then you can start to look at and then give them some other considerations and driving points on what y'all would like for them to look at.
And, and if the gymnasium were to become like three large classrooms, for instance, if that was what the survey, you know, the, the bathrooms, I've done the calculations for the occupant load, and the bathrooms would accommodate, there's extra there code-wise to accommodate a, a different occupancy types. So there's a lot of flexibility built into this.
Excellent.
I'm not trying to throw a curveball at you, I appreciate you, thank you.
No, no problem.
I mean, you could always look at turning the basketball court into half court, and then two classrooms on one of the ends opposite of the kitchen and the storage. I mean, there's all kinds of things he can come up with for you.
Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is consideration of awarding the bid for cabana repairs.
EB, you're not going to get to come in, I'll come up here. Our engineer, EB, Pankook?
Pankook, yes.
Pankook, he's been working with his own. Pankuk, he's been working with us on several projects, the one you just heard, Pierre Restaurant, he's been around with us for a while. But what we have in front of you tonight is the cabana repairs. I think we've had this grant three years, three years. COVID sort of messes up and those kind of things, and then contractors. EB's been patient with us, trying to get this done for us, and we've probably asked him for several of these items that he's getting ready to present, but he's gotten the numbers for us and got the bid for us and turned it over to you.
Is there a copy of the numbers sitting there?
Yes, sir, they have everything. Right here, you can have it.
All right, I knew this was being presented, I didn't realize I was doing the presenting until I showed up. Do you mind keeping me in my glasses? I'm sorry.
Need glasses?
Yeah, I can't see.
I didn't have glasses for you.
No, I didn't have glasses. All right. So we, we were able to get two bids for this project. One is a local contractor, if you're familiar with motion contracting. Their bid, they were actually the high bid. What we did is we got a, a base bid for the exterior walkways as they are, as they're sitting right now. And then we also looked at walkways he used to have before Hurricane Isaiah's came and took those away. So add alternate one is to add those old walkways back in. So the other one is Keystone RNC. Keystone has done some other projects for y'all as well. I believe one was the, the ADA Observation Platform, they finished that, and I, I believe they've done pretty good work for y'all in the past. As you can see, though, Keystone is the low bidder, they are at $134,000 for the base bid. If you add the add alternate in there, they're, they're right around $180,000. I believe your grant is for $200,000. So not only is Keystone the low bid, but they're the only bid that we're able to get where they, the total price falls under that $200,000. Are there any questions that y'all have?
So in reviewing the two bids, one is quite detailed and gives us the fact that, you know, stainless screws and, as opposed to what's galvanized, et cetera. And the other gives us very little. Are these bids comparable?
I believe so. Keystone has, they, they completed those, the, the changes to your ADA overwalk, and they're using, they're, they basically, without saying it, I, I can, I can make sure your contract is a bit more detailed, but, but they're using comparable products to where, to what we had there. So stainless steel screws for the decking, it was hot dip, galvanized main bolts and nuts for all that. The, since y'all are getting close to your, since you're getting close to your grant expiring, there was a, a little bit of a timeliness issue on trying to get these turned around so that you have the option and you don't just lose that grant. So we did move that along pretty quickly, but they're both contractors that have worked for the town before, they've done quality work, they've got a long record, both of them have been doing municipal work. Keystone, even though they have less verbiage on here, they've done several state construction projects in the area, and I believe they have a good record on all of those. So we'll, we need to spend a little bit of time just making sure that we've, we detail everything in your contract, but, but other than that, I don't believe we're going to have any issues on, on quality of materials or anything else.
Yeah, I would highly recommend that we detail the
Right.
...materials that we anticipate being used.
And there'll be a set of construction documents that goes along with the contract.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else?
Good. I'm good.
Just a motion to approve the low bidder?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the bid to Keystone.
Yes.
However, I want to make sure that we get a itemized bid and that it's, the contract is approved by, of course, our manager and our attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
And may I add to your motion?
Sure.
And, and there's stipulation on the warranty period and what it covers.
Yeah, I did notice that one had a five-year warranty and the other one didn't say anything about a warranty.
So I, I believe, and Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe North Carolina construction statute is there's a one-year required warranty, and nothing beyond that is contractually enforceable.
Depends on the nature of the warranty, but we can work out those details. There's various warranties for various types of work.
All right. Motion on the floor.
And just so you know, they're not, nobody's going to sign their, their bids, there's going to be a contract that details all this stuff out that they'll be signing.
Right. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
Can we please take a break before we go to the next?
Yes, that's exactly what's, let's take a five-minute break, please.
Good call.
We're rolling well, I want to keep things moving. We're back from our break, and we'll resume with consideration of aspects of paid parking. The contours of paid parking PowerPoint has been on the website, and Mr. Bock will take us through basically the framing questions and considerations for the contours document that he's placed, and for those of you that have a copy of the agenda, that begins on page 67. Mr. Bock?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we begin, we did promise earlier that we would have a preliminary, I'll call it a financial glimpse at what our sister communities are experiencing in terms of gross revenue, net revenue, cost, and Mr. Hatton has those figures, and so I'm going to let Mr. Hatton proceed with a brief financial report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rock. As Mr. Rock just said, we, Mr. Kelly, mostly, we've talked to the communities in this general area such as Curry Beach, Carolina Beach, Surf City, Wrightsville. We spoke with Holden Beach also, and theirs is a new program, so there's not a lot of money that we can, not a lot of funding that we can see on Holden Beach at this point, but that will change. For example, Curry Beach, their revenues are $742,000 with expenditures of $200,000. And what we were looking through is, we went through these obviously to see what their annual passes were, what the daily rates were, what the hourly rates were, resident versus non-resident, et cetera. Mr. Kelly and I went up to Carolina Beach, went through their program up there, their revenue is $2,991,000 with expenditures of $873,000. You can see next to Surf City, and we put in parentheses who their vendor is. Pivot Parking has taken over quite a few locations. That is a spinoff from Lanier. That was some of the people that we dealt with from Lanier three or four years ago. And so the person that we dealt with at that point, she went and they started Pivot, so that's what that name is. Wrightsville Beach, this is a different world. Revenue, $5,358,000 on expenditures of $1.2 million, or a net surplus of $4.1 million. And they do charge vehicle taxes, you can see there that we highlighted it. Now, getting back to Holden Beach, this is the first year that they've had paid parking, so we found information on their budget of the revenue, of course, was exactly the same as expenses for zero. Once they go through the legislature's process, they will be able to say, okay, this is a profit that we can, we believe we can make from that, but for right now, we can't get a lot of information. And we always like to compare to Holden, obviously. And something else that Mr. Kelly and I found, that they don't like to tell you how many parking spots they have. That's kind of a moving target. You know, you can see, and we get most of this information from audits, we pulled audits off, offline, you know, they're all there, but you can't, they hardly ever divulge how many parking spots they have. It's, it's like it's a moving target. And maybe, you know, they'll find that they can get more cars or less cars in a certain area, and they'll move them around. It's what, David couldn't explain that one a little bit better, because he did a little bit more work on it than I did, because I've been tied up with the audit, obviously. So Mr. Kelly's done a lot of the legwork. He's the brains behind it all.
If I may, before we go, before we go forward, because we're not putting that up on the screen, so looking at revenues and then last expenses, Curry Beach is looking at $542,000 a year. Carolina Beach, from gross to expenditures, their net is $2,117,000. Surf City, gross is $1,344,000, $1,344,350, and their net is $7,5,000 per year. And Wrightsville Beach, which is uniquely different, of course, $5,358,000, their expenditures are 1.245, and they're netting 4.1. So all I want to illustrate with this is it goes to viability. It does work, it does generate revenue, and as the Carolina Beach people indicated, and I'm sure they're going to say it when we're on the Zoom call, it restored order to the beach.
And we looked at all these different ones to say, what's the annual passes, you know, what again is the hourly rates, the daily rates, just trying to get some comparison, and as you can see from your sheet there, you know, some of them break it down between commercial, commercial one, commercial two, and other ones is just a parking spot. So, you know, it runs the gamut, even in our area.
Okay.
Any questions on the comparisons?
Thank you. No, I just, I just wanted a glimpse of what it might look like, I know those aren't one-to-one comparisons, but it's a...
One question, everybody seems to be using Pivot Parking, which is a spinoff of Lanier, except Carolina Beach used to use Reef Parking and had to let them go because all their meters rusted, according to what I, my research showed. Is Park Mobile too big of a national company to consider?
Mr. Grab, I can't answer that. I've no, I've seen the name, but I don't know, you know. Lanier's obviously a big one across the country.
Appreciate you.
And we bought them in before.
Okay.
Yeah, once you put out the RFPs, you'll start seeing who's going to be interested in it and not. Then council's got to make the decision on, well, staff will make a recommendation on this as well, we don't want no cans on the roads, we don't want pay stations and things like that, apps or text, I believe is the way they're going. Carolina Beach has already said that they're probably going to all text next year and do away with apps. And mainly the reason for that is the internet service and things like that, when we get holiday weekends, everybody's trying to get on the apps, everything locks up, or text, you can still probably text pretty well. But all these, we just tried to give you some numbers, and you see the percentages of how much the expenditures are out of their budget, then you see the net, the Councilman Bock laid out. Just real quick on the second sheet, it's sort of what y'all getting ready to do, go through the talks, the questions that y'all have, and everything shows zeros, but those are the kind of information that we have to have to be able to go in and lay out a plan, sort of like the people that's listed. So as you're going through that, these are the kind of numbers that we'd have to have as well in decisions that council has to make. That's it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just, just a glimpse, we'll, we'll have more data if, if we decide to proceed. Some rules.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Do we understand the duration that these parking programs are in place? Are these seasonal or are these year-round for these sistering communities?
Well, Carolina Beach just went year-round.
Okay.
They were seasonal, they tried to make a few modifications to their system, that's what everybody does, they look and see if they can add more parking spaces or things like that. The public got involved in it, they didn't like going down the residential areas as much as what they were looking at, so then they looked at revenue and they said, well, we can make that same revenue if we go year-round. So Wrightsville Beach is pretty much year-round. The other ones talk about it, they've had, and there's a study in Surf City where they looked at one month before and one month after if they continued, or if they just changed it to one hour earlier and one hour later. So those are the kind of things that you write in the RFP to make sure that they're laying out these things, not just on the annual or monthly financial reports, but you want them to analyze as they go to see what we can pick up.
If I, if I may, it's been my experience that the, the vendor gladly looked at that data in hopes to expand or shrink because their profit margin is affected by that. So the vendor has a vested interest in doing that type of analysis, and generally do a post, postseason conference with, you know, a workshop-type group.
In trying to make heads and tails of this, Wrightsville Beach spaces $4,700,000. What does that mean?
That's their, that's their parking rental, like the daily pass or hourly pass, weekly, what have you. Then they have a breakdown for residential, as you can see there, to $130,000. And then the commercial, this is what I was saying, commercial pass one, commercial pass two, I'm not real sure what that even means.
Gotcha.
And then you see, they also get money from their contractors.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, the contractor they have is in the business or commercial area for those, and then when you see the, everybody has different civil penalties, that's something y'all are going to have to look at too, then you have to come up with how you want to do it. Seven days is an increase, or is it increased after 14th day? But all these are the, sort of the questions that y'all have in front of you tonight.
Okay, if I may, before we get bogged down here, let's, I want to move.
You got to move fast.
I'm going to set a time limit of 45 minutes. Here are the rules, assuming that you are agreeable. So we'll poll on each item. Yes, no, yes, obviously keeps it in the document, no, takes it out, revised, sends it automatically to table. Any council member who wishes to raise a point for discussion, we'll stop and discuss, but we'll set a very short duration and try to cover as much ground as we can. And I want to go to the first sheet, which is page two, and I'm sorry, you don't have what we have, we have a Word document up here. Counselor, on page two, which I know you have a copy of, I've given it to you, there's been a lot of question about identifying rental properties given the Supreme Court ruling, and we put it in contours with an asterisk that said, if legally viable, what would be your judgment on that, just so we don't get bogged down here?
I'll be quick. In 2019, the General Assembly passed session law, 2019-11, that's now codified at 160D 1207 subsection C. The language from that statute states that a local government may not require any owner or manager of rental property to obtain any permit or to register rental property with the local government. In April of this year, the North Carolina Court of Appeals heard the Schroder versus City of Wilmington case, it was in a lot of the local press. The court struck down the portion of the City of Wilmington's short-term rental ordinance that required registration, and they also struck down another portion of that ordinance that the court determined was intertwined with registration, and those limitations that were struck down including, included the requirement to provide proof of shared parking and the requirement of posting of registration numbers in each rental unit. That's not identical to what you're asking, Mr. Bock, but I think, given the way the court in April of this year construed that statute, that they would likely strike down some sort of differential treatment to short-term rental parking vehicles.
Thank you. So I would suggest, once there's objection, we table this, and we move to page three.
Just one comment
Sure.
...for that.
Absolutely.
The Oak Island Beach Villas do issue parking permits to their guests, so if you rent a unit there, you are limited to the number of cars, and it's done by a permit on your dashboard, and they do monitor that, and they do that for, to make sure that people aren't using the Oak Island Beach Villas as a public beach parking lot, because there's beach access there. They claim it's at no charge, that's fine, if it's at no charge, but they are counting and authorizing cars to park at Oak Island Beach Villas, just a note.
Well, and to clarify, you can, if you were to issue passes of some sort, or discount some for, some sort to property owners, and allow them to have decals, you could, and by ordinance, allow them to allow whoever's renting their property to use that allow them to allow whoever's renting their property to use that same decal, but you can't. I don't believe the court would allow a completely segregated regulation scheme just for short-term rental vehicles.
All right. I'm going to table this, but that does not mean.
Yep.
We can't go back to it, rather than spend a lot of time on it this evening. So I'm on page, page three in the worksheet. This is the first set of yes, no, revise. And again, we're going to poll quickly, council. Yes, we keep it in the document. It goes forward. No, it's, it's out. Revised, we'll table it as we just did the first item. So the seasonal rules apply April 1st to September 30th. How many yeses do I have? Okay, that's carried. No right-of-way parking without a permit? Oh, I got to vote two. We have three? That carries. Specific spaces.
I have a question on that one.
Okay, go back.
Is that island-wide or ocean-side only?
What's, what's this?
Oak Island Drive or?
That's an excellent question. Let's, I'm going to set aside four minutes for discussion. I, I would support island-wide. To answer your question, Councilman Del.
I would support from Oak Island Drive, beachward.
Okay.
I would assume that we would further define the types of permits, like for services, construction, cleaning, lawn service, trash, rollout service, all the various services that depend on using the right-of-way. I would assume the permitting would, would go to that level of granularity to make sure that they have the ability to park in the right-of-way. And then my next question would be back to the short-term rentals. So are we saying that short-term rentals can't park in the right-of-way without a permit? So now we're going to be issuing permits to short-term rentals so they can park in the right-of-way. So I think we need some clarification on that. I'm in favor of, of getting rid of the right-of-way parking and having permits issued for special cases. I still think it's a bigger topic, again, back to short-term rentals, so.
Craig?
I was, I was, I missed that part about permit. I would be for right-of-way parking, doing away with it with the permit.
Such as contractors?
Right.
I think we'd have a long list of exceptions. Cleaners, contractors, et cetera.
Long, okay.
And we almost have to.
Are we all talking about island-wide, though? Or are we talking about from?
I, to my way of thinking, that was, I would say that the, you know, beachside, not, not the wooded area.
We're going to get it so confused, so it'd be like driving a golf cart on Oak Island Drive. People won't know, where's my cutoff? What can I do? What can I not do?
Here's my only concern, is that enforcement will be by the vendor, right?
Correct.
The vendor's not going to want to enforce over here if he's making money on the paid parking on that side. Because we're not going to have any parking, paid parking spaces here. So you're going to put our police officers enforcing outright.
Let me ask Mr. Kelly. I don't know the answer to that.
So what y'all are bringing up is what we're finding everywhere. You have the town of Leland that has, you contact the police station, get a right-of-way permit. There's no fee. You have other towns that say they are following the common sense rule, heating and air, or a cleaning services parked in the right-of-way cleaning Mr. Martin's house. The police rides by sees that. They don't stop and give that person the ticket. If you want to define parking areas with a vendor, then we draw a line and says, this is the area of parking. We've already talked about the business area to be left out because we don't have adequate parking there now. So you'd already have some areas that says, this is where we want. And then the overflow area, if we talk about the woods, will be a separate area. So that'd be a separate contract. We wanted the contractor to pick up that, and then you would pay that vendor for that service in that area.
That answers.
I'm going to suggest that we table this and come back to it because of the complexity. It would seem we have a division of opinion about whether it should be restricted to south of Oak Island Drive or island-wide with exceptions, how the exceptions would be created, and so on. Is that fair? Is everyone in agreement with that?
But I think the consensus is that we move forward with something in place.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to mark that one tabled as well. I have a suggestion for the group on number five. As I looked at this and reviewing this, it seemed to me that this item belongs on page six when we start talking about passes, resident, non-resident. It's sort of premature at this point to discuss it. So I'm going to, unless there's an objection, I'm going to move it to page six where we get into the resident, non-resident. Thank you. Item number six on our sheet. Thank you. Mike's got it up.
Did you skip four?
Yeah, did we go over three and four?
Yes, I'm sorry. Four. All the yeses. All right. So we're going to identify all town, all parcels and consider for efficacy for a paid parking area. That's four. Five, we've tabled to put it on hold. It's going to be on page six. Number six, town, well, you guys can read it. Utilize a vetted vendor to implement and manage the parking system once established using digital technology. All in favor? Okay.
Well, my only question there is, there was reference to Pilot being a spinoff to, from a previous company. I'm assuming the previous company, prior council members, y'all had exposure?
To Lanier, yes.
To Lanier. Is that the one y'all voted yes and then came back and voted no?
No.
Okay.
That was the second bidder.
That was probably the one we should have.
They did not offer a guarantee. They offered an estimate, which four years ago was $300,000.
Okay.
Net to us, year one.
Okay.
But they wouldn't, would not guarantee it.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
Mike's pulled up the old sheet instead of what's in the agenda.
I'm going to suggest on item seven, we table this. This is a, this belongs in the futuristic system.
Yeah, my answer was no, anyway.
Okay, well, you want, you want to put it up?
No, no, I mean, there's too much to be discussed on seven, number seven.
So we have two tabled items on this page. Moving on to the page four. Consult council. I think we can all say yes on that one. And we are consulting the various members of the administration. That's also a yes.
And includes the manager as well?
Yes, and the manager. Thank you. Well, it sort of begins and ends with him, but, okay, fair enough. I had administration there, just as a shorthand for all the necessary people.
For all the necessary.
And we started naming, naming them, you know, but yes.
What's to include?
Yeah, obviously. I, I'd like a four-minute boundary on discussing item number 10. I think we should talk about this. This is, this is a new idea, and I think it, it warrants a discussion. So I'll just open the floor.
I'm always in favor of ad hoc committees, but we're pressed for time. So if we approve this, we need to get on with advertising and getting the people involved.
And if you have an ad hoc committee, then that puts staff more at, more workload for the ad hoc committee, because then Lisa's got to take minutes, Mike's got to do his thing. Somebody's got to make sure they follow the rules of an ad hoc committee.
Okay. Well, it does indicate, once council approves the paid parking project. So this isn't prior to council approving. This is after we approve. So.
To do what?
Yeah, so that's my next question. To do what? So if we've approved the project, what is this work group going to do?
It's an advisory capacity, I guess, to issues that come up. But I'll let you explain it, is how I interpreted it.
No, I want to, what's, Councilman Blaylon? Do you see a need for this group? Do you have a comment? I just want to make sure everyone gets their weigh-in on every issue.
Well, I, my philosophy's always been, you don't want to get too many cooks stirring the pot. So I want the line of communication to be as, as straightforward as possible. I don't want, I'm not against it. I just don't, I just don't see it as, I don't know. I'm willing to listen, but I, that's my point of view. I, I'm concerned about the number of people involved.
I would just add quickly that, you know, the, David Kelly and David Hatton did say that the vendor meets with us, you know, like after the season or whatever, say, hey, this is what we saw. Here's things that are working. Here's things that aren't. So I see the vendor really providing that feedback for us.
And I, I think I would recommend, well, first of all, my reading of this is, even if approved and implemented, year one will surely have a lot of corrections. So this group, which involves planning board and citizens and council, would be useful in looking at the year one, if we had a year one, and adjusting it. And we, we can limit the amount of time for the administration to be involved. This would probably, I think, be useful before we got the vendor at the table. But I'm, I'm willing to either poll on this, if you want to vote on it now, or we can table it for further discussion. It's really at the pleasure of council.
That's valid.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. So it is a no. Moving on, Mr. Emery, I think we all agree is.
Yes.
Yeah. Stakeholders are engaged as we continue to meet with them.
Yes.
Yes, we'll redefine contours. We are about to collect information from our sister communities in Zoom meetings, which all of you have been invited to. We certainly are taking public input. We'll continue to take it. That's a yes. We have not done this yet. This is TBD. So is number 17, TBD. What are the indicators? And that will be an important discussion. I have, let me just ask the council for your, your, your view of this. I've marked out 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. This really, all of these items go to timeline. And I'll state my concern, and then I would solicit, would welcome your feedback. If we don't discipline ourselves and stay on a timeline relatively close to what we're on, we are going to miss, if we decide to go forward, we're going to miss the next season. So I know there's sometimes a desire to discuss and analyze to the nth degree, but I'm fearful if we do that, that we will miss the window. But I'm open to, I'd like to hear council's point of view. You know, I would, I would prefer to check yes on all of these and move forward. And either we're going to do it, it's yes or no. We're not at that point. We're not anywhere near it. But we ought to be in that time window, which is December at the latest.
All in my mark, yes. But I've been through this. This is my third time in eight years. So I'm going to refer to you guys.
I have concerns with an aggressive timeline, but I understand the window of opportunity. I had considered, do we look at this in phases? I'm not quite sure how we even accomplish that. So I would be okay with a yes on these to, to continue down the path.
Councilman Blaylon?
Yes, I agree.
Councilman Craft?
I agree. I don't want to do any knee-jerk decisions, but if we all just stick our nose down to the grindstone and take care of business, we can get this done. There's tough decisions to be made. But I say yes.
And I'll add this caveat with the indulgence of council. If it turns out we can't meet this timeline and we need to extend, we probably have January. But what I've found in the past is when you have sliding guidelines like that, they tend to slide. So, but yeah, we have a little wiggle room in terms of time. But if we're going to do this, I think we have to make the next season.
Well, and if we adopt the new approach to the budget, right, that first retreat is going to be a budget overview meeting. So that might be the opportunity, if we're going to slip, that we slip there so we have time to review the financials one final time.
Yeah, and I very much like your idea about having a financial retreat. And this, obviously, if we're still interested in proceeding, be at the top of the agenda. So, okay. I'm on page five. Digital technology, I think we're all a yes on that. Please say no if you object.
Well, so I just want to make one point there.
Okay.
There could be visitors who may not be adept or accessible to certain technologies. So one idea I had thought about was at least providing some sort of kiosk station in the lobby downstairs or some, some adoptable means for people who may have difficulty with a pure digital approach to parking.
An excellent idea. I noted that in the RFPs that I've read, several of the companies offer a phone option. So that would solve that.
Yeah, I think I heard something about text. So that might work, so.
All right. So can we mark that a yes with that caveat?
Yeah.
That we'll provide for those who are not in the digital universe. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kelly, before we take up the next one, I know we've, we've talked to you about getting a capacity limit.
Well, we, we went back and Scott went by and got all the tallies, and we broke it down every way that we can break it down. And there's around 1,300 to 1,400 spots. Don't know the number right off the top of my head right this minute. Looking at trying to get to 2,000 spots, sort of like Carolina Beach and Holden Beach is learning, we're pushing things or pushing the envelope down the place streets, trying to get every spot taken. We can, I mean, staff would probably feel better looking at probably 1,500 to 1,700 for the first year, and then try to increase after that, or put 15 this year, and then evaluate at the end of season, just like we saw the other towns have done, and see where we can go. If we need to go hour early, hour later, two weeks prior to, two weeks after two, or do we need to add more spots? I don't know if we need to sit here at the right this moment and try to jam the maximum number of spots that we think we can get on the place streets.
With the, again, the indulgence of council here, I'm going to mark this 1,500 TBD. We may be 1,460, something like that.
Yeah, and this, if I can jump in real quick.
Sure.
This may be the phased approach, right? Maybe the phased approach isn't a program, but the number of spaces, right? And then my question would be, have we maximized our right-of-way access? I see a lot of side streets with parallel parking versus angled parking. We could probably get more spaces in if we angle the cars instead of parallel park, but.
Then you can't get a car through there.
So we've looked at that.
On like second and third row, where there's, I don't know.
Yeah. So, I mean, Scott's looked at the things as well. The right-of-way is the right-of-way, and then we can start looking at, can we do 90-degree on one side? Because they're one-way streets. Move the one-way street to one side and put 90-degree. I mean, it'd be more educational. We'd be relocating some of the roadways. But it's something I think that we can analyze going forward. I don't know if we need to try to jump in the first year and try to grade everything and lay everything out. And then the things that, you're talking about phased approach, you could always look at the parking lots that we currently have. And as she spoke earlier, we could look at those lots, see whatever else we can move or add, or, and make sure we can get 100% usage out of the lots. And you could look at something like that, because there's one on the east end, there's one in the middle, and there's one, two on the west end. So if that's something you want to look at first, we could always fall back to that.
All right.
And then go into the next.
Again, in, in the interest of celerity here, I like Councilman Martin's suggestion that, I think 1,500 is probably the phased goal for year one. We've had some discussions about thinking outside of the box, leasing property that would be suitable, splitting the cost with the, the owner of the property, creating another lot. We've had discussions with the business community. Some of the churches are interested in potentially looking at that, you know, absent Saturday or Sunday services. So there, the first goal, I think, is 15, and then we probably can get to 2,000. And I think it's important that we, we make it clear to the public, there, there is a fixed, finite capacity here, you know, that's what's going on. Is everyone okay with that? That it's 1,500 TBD?
One more thought, though.
Sure.
We, we talked about, we own 12 pieces of property, we think, or I think, on the island. Have we pinpointed which, if any of those, we can turn into parking lots?
Well, the, the ones that we have on Beach Drive are on DOT roads. We have to have the entrance and exit that they've sort of made us do at the cabana. And so that sort of limits, when you have a single lot, what you can and can't do. We have three lots in our location, but I think they would be better suited to be sold instead of putting the parking in. And then we could take that monies and do something else with. But there's areas that we haven't done on 49th Street, where the old skate park, you know, was, or getting ready to be rebuilt. We haven't counted those spots because we haven't configured a parking lot there. So there's things that I believe, and Scott's pointed out, that he believes that he can go in and get some extra parking currently to be able to make this work. But I don't, just don't want to stretch this out too far and, and in three months, try to be grading every road, trying to get a number in there. When we start looking at and go to a vendor, because they're going to ride the town, and they're going to look, and they're going to come back to you and tell you what they believe they can fit. So it's not just us telling them. They're also, they're the experts, and they're going to sit there and take a look and say, well, we looked at this, and you got a ditch on this street. Stormwater overflow is going to be flooded so many times a year. They're not going to count those spots. They're going to look at somewhere else. So those are the kind of things that we need to take into consideration.
And lots on first and second row, where people buy a lot, planning on building on it or selling it five or six years from now. But right now. it or selling it five or six years from now, but right now they're just paying taxes on it? Possibility of renting those lots for three or four years?
There's a few parcels. Councilman brought up a few, that we're going to go talk to the owners of those that we've utilized before, and see if they'd be willing to go into a short-term contract, or whatever we could go, and then look at the tax break, or whatever the fee, or whatever that would be going forward. So that's something we can look at.
Okay, so that is 1,500 as the phase one goal, TBD, because we'll get an actual count, we don't know. Parking map is TBD, TBD, that's going to be developed. I would move with council's permission on item number 28, that we table this. This is part of that discussion about right-of-way parking and what constitutes a valid permit. The one thing I will say from my conversations with Mr. Kelly, that we would want to entrust the vendor with this, so that we're not burdened with people applying for permits. And we would have an exception list that would be considerable for cleaning, for construction, so on and so forth. I'm going to set aside four more minutes, we're closing on the hour. Overnight parking, I'm open the floor for discussion, should be eliminated. I'm getting a lot of feedback from citizens who fish, who walk the beach, who enjoy the beach at night.
But they're not spending the night, right?
Not to my knowledge. They didn't give me itineraries.
I mean, how would you tell if they're spending the night, or if they're fishing till 1:00 in the morning?
I think people that decide they want to go fishing at 2:00 in the morning can get a permit for that.
Where are they going to get a permit?
Right downstairs.
Who's going to be down there?
2:00.
Oh, not 2:00 in the morning. They need to be thinking a little bit in advance.
Charlie, you're going to need more employees, buddy.
So what other towns do? You start looking at this, and you start looking at where you want two-hour parking and those kind of things. If we do paid parking from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., just using numbers, and then at 9:00 p.m. to whatever, 6:00 a.m., there's two-hour parking, or something like that. And that's written into their contract. So they would have probably one individual riding the street that night to see if, you know, Charlie's been parked there for two hours, or whatever Charlie's been parked there. There's probably, I think there was two of them that say, no overnight parking. But that's what they say, no overnight parking. But is there people parked there? Yes. Do they do anything to tow them off or anything? No. They do things, and we do things, and everyone else will do things to try to deter things from happening. So then other towns looked at that, and they decided to do the two-hour parking limit. And then that sort of regulated it more, besides just saying, no parking after 9:00, because we all know this is a public beach, and people are going to want to go there or whatever. Because then if we do that, then the people with houses are the only people who have the access to the beach.
Well, what does the police department do now if they see a car parked overnight?
If they get a call, what I've seen is, they go and, you know, not investigate, but they go see what somebody's doing.
We have people who don't have anywhere to stay that will pull up to the, and stay at a...
They get calls on those.
Okay, all right.
They suspicious vehicle, or things like that.
So what is the pleasure of council on this item?
I like the two-hour parking concept.
Or four. Can you fish in two hours?
I just want to stop overnight parking.
I'm a no for eliminating night parking.
I'd just go back to the, the large house was using all the strand access for their overflow parking, and that stops that.
Hold on, let's go down the line so the public can hear us. Go ahead, Sheila.
I'm sorry. I'm getting passionate. Nine to six, then what's the use of eliminating overnight parking? I mean, then our police department is still going to do what they do now. If there's a car there overnight, or looks suspicious, or they get a phone call. So if our paid parking is ending at 6:00, isn't that what we said, nine to six?
Eight to six.
Eight to six. So that's just my...
Okay, so your, Councilwoman Bell's a no. Mr. Kraft?
Eliminate overnight parking?
Yes, no, revise.
Revise.
Revise, okay. Councilman Blayla?
Revise.
Councilman Martin?
Revise.
All right, moving on.
That was easy.
Revise. Okay, that's a revise. Define the commercial corridor, we are going to do that, correct, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
And while we're on the subject of right-of-way, just for a moment, as an aside, in the list of exceptions, there are some businesses in the commercial corridor, like Grape and Ale comes to mind immediately, that rely on right-of-way parking, and so we're going to have to give them an exception, we're not going to hurt our businesses, and so on.
I thought it wasn't including the commercial district.
The parking is not, no. If you, so right now, we're going alleyway to alleyway, is what the maps lay out until council gives us other direction. In the Long Beach section, then you go down to the pet store, CRCB, that'll be defined as those areas. And then in the Yopon area, you go property line to property line, because there, they bought some of the lots behind them and made parking, like where the Steakhouse is and things. So all those would follow that line all the way to Castle Beach Road, and then council can adopt that. And either that's the area that we define as commercial, there won't be any permits within those areas, and that'll be an area that will be the police to enforce if something happens instead of the parking vendor.
But those businesses, some of those businesses today regulate their own parking. Like Publix has a sign that says, no beach parking. Now, how they enforce that, I don't know, but they have the signage, so, yeah.
My concern is the businesses that have been there for a while, that utilize right-of-way parking as part of their parking area.
Yeah, they all have to.
There's a bunch of them that do.
Agreed. That'll be in the long list of exceptions.
That's right.
We did reach out to Publix and Food Lion, and their response to that is their corporate entity will decide how to handle it, they will handle it. The private business folks that we spoke to said, we give a gentle warning, and if they don't move the car, we tell them, it's private property. So some of this will be self-regulating, don't just deal with it. 31, I want to open the floor for discussion on that. What this was attempting to, for those of you who are sports fans, if you've been to an event at a university, and you drive up, everyone is creating their own little parking lot, right? Park here for $10. And obviously, we don't want half the world competing with us. I do think this item would require a zoning change. We'd have to go through the planning board to get that. But that seems to me to be doable. But I'll open the floor for discussion.
What, what has to go to the planning board?
Banning private parking lots.
I don't think, I think, I don't think we're, residential is not, it's not zoned for a parking lot, is it? Or for private parking?
No.
Matt?
I mean, I don't, I don't think it is.
I don't believe it's listed in our table of uses, when something like that happens. You have to find the next closest use that's in our ordinance, so without it being properly defined and listed in our table of uses, there'd likely be some burden on staff to make a determination on what's permitted and where. So if there's an intent to regulate that, it would be a good exercise to define what these things are, and determine in what zoning districts, if any, they're appropriate.
If we didn't want private parking lots competing with our parking vendor, then that's, I guess that was my question. They're already not allowed, correct?
I don't have that table of use knowledge in front of me right now to make a determination, but if it's not listed, if that particular use is not listed, then it would be incumbent on me to find the next closest use in the table and determine what districts it's permitted in. I don't think that's something you probably want me doing. You want to lay it out clearly and determine that for yourselves.
So let me just poll, yes, assuming that the town planner can sufficiently regulate this, right? Because otherwise, you're going to have every ma and pa. Okay, we're good on that one. I'm sorry?
I vote no.
Okay, still carries.
You want to allow private parking lots?
We're trying to find 1,200, 1,300, 1,500 parking spots, and we're maybe not coming up with them. I think we can make a zoning change where someone can have a private parking lot.
Those wouldn't be our spots. They would be private, those wouldn't be town spots, they would be private spots.
But I mean, that'd be more parking, we're trying to figure out how to let people go to the beach, and we only have 1,200, 1,400 spots for them.
Can I suggest this, in the interest of trying to keep to our town, town boundary here? It carries as a yes, but I'll mark it for revision to see what Matt and the planning board can come up to, right? Is that satisfactory?
That's fine with me, yeah.
All right. We're at page six, which is the last page, believe it or not. We're making progress. These are the difficult questions. Remember that we moved from page three. All parking will be first come, first served, however residents with a current sticker will not be charged the hourly rate. We've put that onto this page. It doesn't appear yet, but it will be there. We have approximately eight minutes. Would you like to proceed, or would you like to reflect on this? Because this, I think there are a number of items in here that are really going to require a lengthy discussion, much like right-of-way.
Yeah, my, the only add I would have quickly is, I believe the town sticker program should stand, and that residents should still be allowed to purchase a sticker, and that they're exempt from paid parking. However, I would consider changing the first come, first served, and still having some of the reserved spots available as a consideration. So if we call that revise, or if you want to say yes with revision, that would, I would say yes with revision.
Yeah, I'd like to just hold this whole page and come back to it when we're fresh. I would say this in response, and I'll invite the others to comment. There's kind of two, not kind of, there are two distinct approaches. One would be to reserve spaces using a sticker system, well, actually, a license plate system, but, you know, and increase that number from 120, which won't be adequate. What that number is, I don't know, will depend on what David finds and what the capacity is in year one. So that's one approach. Keep it, create more of it. That cuts your profit, but serves the citizens. The other is to have the pass that's sold to residents/taxpayers entitled them to go anywhere in the system. There are no reserved spaces, but residents, because they have the sticker, can go anywhere they're not bound. It's kind of like the divide in how I'm thinking about it. But I do think, given the hour, we should table, this is the meat of it. With the exception of these things, let me just ask quickly, are we going to, I'm on number 38, are we going to offer discounted passes for the handicapped? I know we have to have handicapped spaces. Is that something, that's something we should think about? Veterans, and Councilwoman Dell, here, the hours of operation are marked eight to six, but we can change that, we could make it nine to six. Okay. And, okay, and I think we'll come back to this. Madam Mayor, I'm going to return.
May I make a comment before you return?
You may.
Yeah. The only comment I have is if we start giving free passes to this group, and this group, and this group, including residents, then who's going to be paying? And this is where we got to the stopping point last time. This is, this was the bone of contention last time. Because then you don't, then you're losing money, because you don't even have enough money to pay the vendor. So I guess I'm just voicing my opinion, I would be in favor of a reduced cost for residents. But...
Excuse me?
A reduced cost for residents.
Thank you.
But that's just my opinion.
And can we, I'm going to close, just, I think we need to come back to this, and we'll all have time to think about it. There's obviously going to be differing views, unless there's an objection. Madam Mary, you have the chair back.
Madam Mayor?
One thing, we've been sort of holding off on sending the RFPs and the contracts and everything from everybody else, because we didn't want to overload, you know, the first thoughts or first process. So if you give them the okay, we'll go ahead and send out the three towns that we have. And then you'll, there's also a study that Surf City done after the fact, so they can see what they can do on the increase and decrease of spots. So we can send those things to you, so you can start seeing what other towns do for parking. You'll notice that one town gives away free resident parking for the first two cars. And if they want to do one, then they, third one, then they charge $100. So you go ahead and look at low-speed vehicles, you're going to have to start looking at everything, and this way, you'll see what others do, and then maybe you can, then when we start to build the RFP, you'll already have something. Just try to get something out to you for education.
Desirable.
I think more information is always desirable. I would caution my colleagues to read it simply as information. I mean, the whole point of this is we're designing what we want. So what others do is what they do, what we want to do, what we think is in the best interest of citizens.
And what works for them.
Yeah, there you go.
One thing I want to throw out when we talk again the next time we talk, number 41, all beach access parking spaces, only 200 reserved for resident permit holders. I've said all along, my thought is, if we're going to create a hardship on our taxpayers, we need to give them enough parking spots. We need to have a whole lot more than 200 parking spaces at the strand accesses.
Again, that's...
That's something I want everybody to think about.
Yeah, that's a balancing point. We'll come back to this discussion, because it's complex, if that's okay. So, Madam Mayor, you have the chair, we still have agenda items.
Thank you. Good job, everyone. Consideration of the proposed text amendment to Section 6.5, Table of Uses and Activities. Is this the same that you took off the agenda?
Yes.
Is that correct? So we're not doing that?
I took Section 7.2, yeah, I took that off.
Okay. Onto new business. Approval of a resolution, well, that goes away too.
But you still need to take action.
Is he not here?
You'll still need to take action, so we give him his gun.
Okay.
But are we going to do that formally, or we have to just assign?
You can go ahead and do the motion, so we can go ahead and award him his...
That's, that's great. So approval of a resolution awarding to retiring Sergeant Paul Harris, his badge and service weapon. Is there...
You should have let Mr. Playlock make that motion. Mister police officer.
Do you want to make that motion? Do you want to make the motion for the resolution?
Page 93.
93, page 93.
Sorry. Got my new hair in ages, I forgot to put them in.
And his glasses.
94.
93.
Yeah, okay.
The motion there at the bottom.
The motion's on the opposite page, right?
Resolution's on 94, correct.
There you are.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution awarding retiring Police Sergeant Paul Harris, his badge and service weapon, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor. unanimous. Consideration of a resolution concerning digging dangerous holes on the beach. Mr. Kelly, do you want to introduce that?
Good timing.
Yes, ma'am. I think the Town of Naggs Head did some of this, Brunswick County came out the resolution, and this is following in their steps for the digging dangerous holes. As you saw this weekend, we had a large hole and a fire put on the beach, Sunday, I believe it was. We had to get Public Works to come in and fill that in. So people are doing those kind of things, and they are a safety concern, and this resolution supports that.
Yes, so we've been invited to support this resolution. I'm going to go skip to the end. So now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Oak Island, North Carolina, expresses its support of state legislation that would increase municipalities' ability to address the dangerous issue of holes on the beach.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
All in favor? Consideration of a resolution declaring September 2022 as preparedness month in Oak Island. Mr. Kelly, do you want to do this one?
Yes, ma'am. This, again, came from the county commissioners at Brunswick. Frank Williams set his initiative as 100 counties prepared, and this goes along with the resolution that other towns are adopting, talking about things that the town has gone through and going forward with.
I lost my page, sorry.
98.
Thank you. If I can get there. There we go. Again, skipping to the end, uh, now therefore be it resolved that Oak Island Town Council hereby declares September twenty-twenty-two, excuse me, as preparedness month in Oak Island, and encourages all citizens to provide for a lasting legacy to their loved ones by developing an emergency plan, building an emergency kit, and communicating their emergency plan to all members of their household and/or workplace.
Is this in any way supported or facilitated by other agencies like the American Red Cross, or...
I haven't read anything that implies that.
Yeah, I just skimmed it, it didn't look like anything in there with collaborating agencies, I mean, that's fine, I was just curious.
County had sent to us and...
That's what the county sent, okay.
Prayer or motion?
Are you making the motion, sir?
Oh, I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution for the Declaration of September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two as preparedness month for Oak Island.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, consideration of contracting with Edmunds Gov-Tech for financial software, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Lord.
Mr. Hutton, would you like to come up?
Is this to get rid of?
Give us the, uh...
Oh, my God.
Lowdown?
Run, Hatton, run. Long time coming.
Uh, yes, you know what, the issues we've been having with the present software company that we have, and it was bought to light with Steve Edwards during the budget workshops that we were having. So we have reached out to several vendors, and the ones that we've looked at, and the ones, the one that we really feel like would be a good fit for us is Edmunds Software. We have had, uh, six or seven presentations. Every department head that deals with software has sat in with different personnel from Edmunds. And, uh, Mr. Edmunds even came by for a personal visit, he was close by in North Carolina, so he, he went out of his way to come down here to see us and talk to us, so, you know, that was, that was pretty good. So, I think it would be a good fit for the Town of Oak Island, from what we've seen, all the examples. We've gone online, been able to, to see how it works, talked to other communities that have it. And they did tell us that they are getting quite a few new customers, because people that are leaving Tyler.
Have met with the department heads to go over, so they could see the sample, correct? Because Tyler was implemented without any of the department heads.
I know, exactly, I, I agree with him.
I, I know, I was here.
I know, you were, that's right, you were here. And, uh, we had Steve Edwards probably sit in three or four different times.
So does that mean that building inspections, development services will actually be able to intermingle with this?
Correct.
Wow.
Yep, like we were promised before. Then we won't have to have two different tax programs and collections, like we have, you know, we were promised that from Tyler, and they never went to a different version, so that creates a lot of...
They can do assessments and taxes.
Okay, so, uh, Tyler crash landing.
Yes.
Right, where it just didn't interface, and it didn't deliver what we needed. Have you run a proof of concept on this? Have we actually put it up and run it here, so we know it works?
No, we have not.
Okay, uh, but you've seen it in operation elsewhere?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And on their tests, you know, on a test site, we went out on that, and we've had all the department's heads as...
Okay, you've tested it, but not proof of concept here. Do you have, uh, the gold standard in the contract for on-ground support? So that when we install this, we're actually going to make sure it works, and we're going to debug it right away.
Got boots on the ground to train.
Going to Mr. Martin, my colleague next, who knows something about technology. But do you have what you feel you would need in terms of on-ground support?
Yes, sir, it appears that, you know, again, they can tell us anything, and they promise us the world. But, uh, the contract does specify that, you know, they will give us the support that we need. Of course, Tyler's told us that too, and it turned out that...
Right, I'm worried about the, when we transition platforms, this could be...
But during the transition period, they've already laid out, I mean, taxes will go first, because you have to have sort of the backbone for everything else to lay into. Uh, planning and building inspections is going in second, um, and then the billing part will go in last. This time, we'll be able to have parking wrecks, uh, Scott being the same program. All departments will now be under one unified program, so it's going to be working on that side. But as far as they, they've already told us and started assigning people to us, they're just waiting for us to go forward. Uh, and they have, like, three different tiers, if we can't get Mr. Martin on the phone, then we have the next person to call, the next person to call. We're not sitting there waiting like we get on the other company, we'd be sitting there for three or four hours on the phone waiting for that callback number. But this one, they have, uh, three layers that we can call and pick up, and then Mr. Edmunds gives you his cell number and says, "You call me if the other three don't pick up." And so he's, he's worked out, but the whole thing that we've noticed is if you don't say something's wrong, they don't know nothing's wrong. So when we have something, we're going to have to make sure that Rose reaches out to them and tells them then, we're, we're not getting a connection or whatever we're doing. Um, because that was one of the things, and then the software works in all programs, we don't have to buy a Droid unit, or we don't have to buy the other people. So everything's sort of, just pick it on Mr. Martin now, but we're not, we're not having to worry about that.
Are there any other minutes penalties that you know of that in North Carolina that are running the same software?
Yeah, we've already talked to them.
Yeah.
We've already been in some of their, we get, so when they're doing this, they pull you into it, and you can sit there and look in this town, and you see what they're doing that time, and then if they wanted to be able to access a certain program, they would know that we're going to be in the background looking. So they would let us sort of travel into people's things to see what they were doing and how they did it. Um, and then on the building inspection side, they'll have to go back and look at the ordinances, they have to look at all these fee schedules. And they started walking us through the process, how they have to make sure everything, when they throw everything out, it's got to stick. And at the end of it, we want to build where development services, uh, the planning and zoning part, when people apply for permits, we want them to be able to only apply for it once they get everything filled out. We don't want it to go through that wall without things missing, because we always get those calls saying, "I've applied five months ago," or "four months ago," or "two months ago." Well, this will eliminate that process, because they're going to have to go through a wall to get there. So it's going to kick it back on the email and say, "We haven't received all your information." So that thing, on that side, is going to be a great thing that we have going forward.
Does 126,000 include all the modules, or are all the department modules separate?
Every, well, as you go through the contract, there's a total number, which is what that is there.
With Edmunds, that's going to be a potential savings on what we pay for Tyler now, plus the annual amount of money that we pay to have the software from Tyler, that is a little bit lower with Edmunds. So there is some cost savings there.
Wow, 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 win-win.
Are there adequate, um, considerations in this contract that, uh, coincide with our continuity of operations plan?
Um, I believe so. The apartment that we had with the vendor before is, we had so many, uh, programs, like when Mrs. Bale worked in the taxes, we had three different programs, and sewer assessment was in one program, taxes was in another program, and everything was just sitting out there, where these people are going to be pulling everything into a single program that we then can access. Um, if Matt wants to look at something, he can pull up the taxes, and he can see what taxes is. And we want to be able to establish, um, if Scott and him's over there working, they want to look at the water account or sewer account, and see, you know, if something going on, they'll be able to look at those kind of things, at the whole concept of, um, the mayor lives here, and it's, they can see everything about the mayor, at one spot, instead of opening up a page and closing the page, and those kind of things.
Okay, but what I'm hearing is, is you guys have done your homework, done your research, and you're comfortable with this, right?
To the best of our ability and with Rose.
And with that in mind, I'd like to make a suggestion to make a motion to engage, I'm kidding, go ahead.
Motion.
Okay.
Please, go ahead.
Tom.
Make a motion to engage Edmunds Gov-Tech to implement financial software as described in the amount of 126,895 dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
What's that?
You make that subject to final...
We'll recall, we had this in the budget, also, this was budgeted for...
Yes, let's back up.
Oh.
Subject to...
Attorney review.
Attorney review.
Attorney review.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Wait, Lisa added Moffett Nichols, oh, no. Yes, something we had to do with the date.
Yes, you had to, um, consider scheduling special meetings, one on the 27th and one on October 4th.
Twenty-seventh and October 4th, what are the times?
6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M., okay.
And October 4th, Lisa.
Yes, sir.
That require a motion?
Yes, please.
Does anyone care to make that motion?
Well, and, and the, let me, for the record, state that the special meeting on the 27th would be to review, um, a plan prepared by Moffett Nickel to be submitted to the Coastal Resources Commission called the Beach Management Plan. And then the purpose for the meeting on October 4th would be to hold a public hearing as required to submit that plan.
I thought we'd already done this.
You have to have a separate public hearing for the Beach Management Plan, it's two different plans, so...
Okay.
I'll just, uh, I won't be here the 27th, I'll try to make the 4th, I'll do the best I can.
You want to find alternative dates?
I think that's the only day.
I mean, we'd have to check with Moffett Nickel for an alternative dates.
Yeah.
I think it would be important to have the entirety of council.
Well, for the 4th, I'll make every effort, I'll make every effort to be here for the 4th, certainly.
I'm just wondering if, is there a hard date for submission?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you want to get on the November agenda for the CRC, they wanted it, uh, October 6th, in case we had to do any changing for their part. October 7th is when they want to submit. They have to have it so many days prior to that, that's why the schedule we had.
If Counselor Martin can make October 4th, we can brief him on what all takes place on September 27th. Sounds like a plan.
Well, no hard copy would be provided anyway.
Gosh, you're going to miss Johnny from Moffett Nichols.
Uh, he's probably going to miss Sam and Doug.
Is there a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion for the dates that Lisa said. September 27th for review by Moffett Nichols, October 4th for the public hearing, 6:00 P.M.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Unanimous. Which now to go into closed session?
I will make a motion to go into closed session to consult with the town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss possible land acquisition pursuant to NCGS 143, 318, 11A, 35.
Pretty good.
I'll second that one. Before we go into closed session, can we go potty?
All in favor?
I just want to say, we're going to get a closed session.
We are back from closed session, and no actions were taken. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
You're supposed to do that, Sheila.
Me going by the...